This conference will now be recorded.
We just want to make sure that everyone can be heard and recorded if you're going to say something from the audience. There's a microphone up here. That way we can get you covered. And if you could state your address and where you live and decide that. It's all for the minutes so that we can get it. And clearly state your name. All right? Anyone online, we got your stuff. It's, we've got a recording up there. So you can't stick your tongue out. You can't, you can't stand up in your boxer shorts, right?
Oh, man, I guess I can't stand up.
Oh, and as a dependent customer, we leave comments from the audience at three minutes. Okay? Okay. So we got a call to order. Yes, sir. Start with Mr. LaCher.
Here.
That's how.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Yeah.
Ms. O'Connell.
Here.
And Mr. Kish.
Yeah.
Sir, you have four of your first order of business should be to acknowledge Mr. Jensen's difficulty in attending and to allow him to participate by electronic means.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay, you're official, Ray.
Yeah, thank God.
Let's believe you.
I'm glad you lead. Do the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, I am. In this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so there's any changes to these?
Yes, we had one change in that six B and it's a thank you proposal from Mr. Soto. I don't see him here yet, but there is a proposal in your packet to hand out and was emailed to you last night.
Right.
So the motion would be to, to the agenda has been that would be six B.
So moved.
Second.
What was that for, Mr. Kish? Of the shop. Okay. On favor.
Aye.
Aye. Ray?
Aye.
Thank you.
I didn't give it to the mood yet.
The minutes, Mr. Pierce has suggested a couple wording changes for clarification of some of several names. And so those have been included in the minutes, but just so that you can see them, we put that in as a handout and that's the first two pages. First one would be in the fifth order of business and the next one in the 18th order of business. Okay? Any other changes?
Hi, on page 11 of our book with end line 84. And I'm glad Steve's here because I, it says that his legal team has advised him. Did you say legal team? I didn't think you did.
Wait a minute.
See, number eight. Number 84. Page 11.
I don't know. I don't know. Verbally said, listen to the tape, which usually goes off of not the handouts, but listens to the tape.
Oh, he just said.
I thought you didn't say that. I don't have a legal team. So I didn't say it. Okay, it wasn't your email. Well, no, you said I should have my legal team see your attorney.
Right.
Count. Yes. So we can strike that.
Wait a minute. We're not, we're on, we're still on number three. We're now on number four. We're, we're jumping ahead.
My bike fall. Sorry.
Audience comments.
Okay, so where are we?
Number four.
Well, number four. Audience comments. If you could come up to the mic and take the mic and make your comments. None?
Tell what it is.
Now we're talking about, okay, now we're back to page 11, item 84. So we're gonna strike, make the changes on item 17, item 138. Oh, it's just the, the, my, 84. And.
So we're pressing out.
And his legal team.
Yeah.
Has advised. From and his legal team has advised him that his rights are being violated.
Stonewall.
Do you want to pick up the Stonewall too?
No, no, he said that.
Okay.
You didn't say his rights were being violated.
Yeah, he did say his rights were being violated and he was being treated, the way he's being treated and the denial of access to the records.
Right, you don't want.
So just from and, and ending with violate.
No, ending with him.
Ending with him.
Okay.
Stonewall and that his rights are being violated and.
Okay, and, okay. So the resident Steve McAdams stated his requests are being stonewalled and that his rights are being violated and the way he is being treated and the denial of access to the records. He wants this illegal?
Yes. That was what he said.
Stellamaris HOA, it's not, the board has supervisor LaCher to be a liaison with, and work with the district manager engineer, the attorney and the Stellamaris HOA representative. No, that's the Villages at Stellamaris who we're working with, not Stellamaris.
Okay.
It's with, and the Villages of Stellamaris representatives to coordinate the project.
So we'll insert Villages up in front of Stellamaris.
That's fine. They're not an HOA though.
Yeah, that's not HOA.
Right. Are they a COA?
Yeah, they're COA, but I don't think that's your name really, is it?
The Villages, the Villages at Stellamaris.
Thank you.
Thank you. And strike HOA?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move, we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Now, I don't want to give this report, do you know if he's coming?
Stop and schedule him for another meeting. Let you guys know if it's apologies, states were turned up with, you know, we'll be in the meeting, so. I did do the ride around with him and I don't think there's anything to add to what's done. So we can touch on with him too.
I have one question. I just took a ride in the back and besides getting mud all over my car that I have to explain to my husband, the rancis really hide there. It's mowed where the airplane club is, but the rest of it is extremely high. He doesn't.
Yeah, they cut it. They've been getting swabbed, so, but they did cut it.
Did they do the whole 50 acres?
Yeah. That's, that's part of the lease agreement.
Yeah, well, it's hot.
Yeah, okay. I'll mention that. It's, isn't it be kind of regular that they don't cut it?
Yeah, they weren't doing, they were by.
Well, we just got, just last month or before that. So they've been swabbing this and that, but I'll mention it.
Okay.
You do have a, Michelle, the, there were several things identified that's not in the report that was identified in this report. You want me to just post it in email and send it off to Robert?
Yeah.
Okay. When is this, I would be submitting a proposal.
That's what you have right here.
Right.
The, it's a handout right here.
$900.
$900 for plant, 50 arborcolus and, yeah, 50 arborcolus. Also taking out some of the dead hawler, Indian hawler. So.
So do we need that?
Once you have the time to do this, I mean, it's going into, I mean, brackets, we. We water it.
Yeah, we water it anyway. So, yes. I believe you have, you should also. Yeah, then you're. I mean, you can plant them anytime, but, you know, they. I think, and you saw what he was looking at, Michelle, figuring this according to this.
Yeah.
Should we accept the estimate? I mean, I, I'm, I don't see anything when I come home. I don't understand stuff.
Yeah.
I'll move, we accept the proposal from Soto along for $900 for planning of the arbicle.
On favor.
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Thank you.
And, let's see.
Thank you, Mitch.
Yep, Mitch, Tony, see if changing your graph timing.
Yes, sir, I'm changing it up a little bit. On the front of the binder, I put my card, so if there's anything that you guys would like to see more, just email me, let me know and I'll add it on there. So if we start on the first page there, you can see that we treated 9.69 million gallons of wastewater this month, or actually last month, August. And then the water produced was 3.47. And then what we sent out for irrigation was 2.8 million gallons. And then if we go back a couple pages, we got the graph there to show what the daily flow for that month was, the average. So if you look in July for the wastewater, it was just below 110,000 gallons a day. In August, it jumped up to just below 120,000 gallons a day. So it increased a little. And that always happens with the rain. We have a little bit of infiltration, but not a lot here. Same on the water, there was an increase from month to month, but then if you jump back to the irrigation graph, it went way down. 5.1 million on irrigation in July and August, all the rain, we've not been sending out very much irrigation at all. And that's why you see the tank sometimes overflows back there. So there's a drain that drains it, but sometimes it's more than the drain handle. And if the water plant is calling for water, it automatically is putting water in that irrigation tanks as well. There's no way to stop that unless we have.
So what happened that night?
I mean, so, so what happens? So if the, when the water comes from the well field to the water plant, it sends water to the RO. The RO is making water for your drinking water, but it splits off some of that flow and it fills those two tanks. So if those two tanks call for water, they'll fill automatically. The RO is not running, it's no problem. But when it's the opposite, the RO calls for it, the tanks are already full, it's still putting water into those tanks. And there's an overflow in the back to let it go out the back, but if it's running a lot, it's more than, more than the overflow. Some overflow to the parking lot.
Can, can you use the tank that where you're getting the blending and just run your reclaim water in there and?
That's the tank that's overflowing is the blending.
Right, but if you don't add any portable water to it, blend it and just store your, there's no way not to add it.
Okay. When it, when the, when the RO runs it automatic, so during the day, we can stop that because the operator's there. But when, when he leaves at night, if the RO kicks on and automatic, it starts making water and it fills that tank as well. So might be a possibility with that using automatic, automatic valves, put to some. Absolutely, that definitely probably take care of that. Sure.
Would the tank be sufficient to, oh, because I know a lot of times, you have a lot of time to loosen up that point to.
So other than a couple months in rainy season, it's never an issue. But when it's rainy season's here, a lot of people are not irrigating. When they're not irrigating, we don't have anywhere to go with that water. So of a day, of a day, we can send that water to the pond in the back, we can manually flush it out of our, or we can even stop the flow in this front, but at night when it's automatic, there's no way, no way to do that. And, and I'm afraid to leave the RO off and just run it in hands during the day because we, we don't want that possibility of running out of water.
Well, just because it's overflowing, no real damage.
No, no damage, no, nothing from the DEP, no trouble other than you see the water running on the.
So it's running by that shed, you know?
Everyone just comes over that tank and runs across that shed and out that front. It's just costing somebody to run wells and you don't need to be running. Well, that's true, but you are running it because it's going to the RO. So, yeah, so.
Yeah, there may be.
There are ways to know what's going on. It's irrigation control. Sure.
I just don't want to go crazy and, you know, spend it for something.
That's what I'm saying. That's my thought, that's why I've never brought it to your attention, but again, you know, I, I don't know, it's, it's your plan, it's up to you, I'll do whatever you guys want. Positive and hurting anything.
But you never have a shortage of reclaim RO.
Never a shortage, yeah, absolutely, only an overage, never a shortage.
So you're just acting like the diverted plants that they got up the end of the Faulty Union where it puts it over to the side. We're just doing it down here.
I mean, we could just increase the overflow on the back, if that's okay, the size of the overflow, so that it runs out the back, not front. Just a bigger pipe. That would be a cheaper alternative, or should I say more costly thing.
I don't know.
Or skip the other. Okay, that'd make something very simple, you'd be able to pump out even. Yeah, okay, yeah, keep it cheap. So on our list here of items requiring approval, the only thing that really is an issue, but it's working right now, was stuff that we've talked about in the past, and that's the fire station over canal, it's working, but it needs attention. And then there's two lift stations that have the old panels that are going to need attention in the future soon.
What do you mean fire stations?
I call it a fire station, it is.
Fire irrigation pump station.
Fire irrigation on the canal. So if we run out of water reuse tank and there's a fire situation or if that system totally fails, we have the backup system on the canal. It automatically sees the pressure loss and it kicks on and runs.
Well, it's a problem.
It's electrical equipment that's outdated and hard to maintain.
Yeah, well, it gets into your, your irrigation because the fire system is also your irrigation water. And so if it gets in there, that's pretty salty water and it's not going to do your, your, your plants very good.
Okay, so it needs addressing. With the safety concern? That was one of the top things on the Kepler for the plant to address that. So now it's time to go ahead and get some plants going, get some bids. I, I actually, and I don't know, I've started getting pricing for that. I don't know if something you're going to put out for bid or what, but I'll bring the pricing that I get to you and then you can decide from there how you want to proceed.
Is it determined by the amount? Whether a proposal has to be done?
Yes. There's certain limits. Yeah.
I think it's 200,000 or you have to bet it out only. If it's construction, it's higher than that. It all depends what category it falls in.
Some of those numbers jumped up just recently.
Oh, you used that record index, engineered record index.
Wait a minute, we were getting bids on $90,000 jobs, not what you think.
You still can, but you don't have.
All right. You just don't have completely.
Really? Okay. There are certain, there are certain categories for operation, maintenance versus construction, and then, then again, there's a, just a practice and policy, statute does mandate it, or still, and they have the rules I'm talking about also. And then for out these two in the bid process too, that you may be able to waive some of the requirements, you know, that necessary for our policy for certain. To answer your question, yes, there was an issue with the generator. The generator's not built anymore. We found a used board and put it in. So it is working, everything is working, it just does not communicate any longer with the plant. But if it sees a pressure loss, it comes on automatic. Compliance, the wastewater plant, we were in compliance all month, water plant, we're always in compliance. The reuse system back at the plant, as far as pressure, everything's working perfectly. I think we brought it to your attention last month or month before, BCI, they ordered the PLC to make, so what fills the tanks automatically on the irrigation side, it has a computer PLC that's got some sensors in there and they see that, they communicate back to the SCADA, which sends a signal to the wells, tells it to turn on the PLC on the irrigation, that PLC is bad, it's no longer built, so they had to modify it to something updated and they're doing that this month. And, and that's going to come more and more, I think. Your SCADA system at this point is 12 or 13 years old. I think we're going to see that more and more as time goes on. The performance metrics, it's just the same thing we talked about in the beginning, how much water we use, how much wastewater we treated, and the reuse that we send out. I put on there a list also of the sludge that we produced, sludge that we had Carl haul. And that's just through the wastewater treatment processes, it's broken down, it finally gets to a point where we can no longer break it down anymore and that has to go out in the truck. The reed, your on air, the auto flushers, the reeds, and then your chlorine usage per month. If you drop down below that, there's maintenance and repairs, that's just the, the normal maintenance we do and inspecting pump stations weekly, we do that every week.
If we go back for just a second, now you're going to get a, an estimate to upgrade that pump station and bring it back.
Yeah, but that, that's not just one, it's a whole, there's a bunch of different estimates within that, but I'll ring them all back.
And then what about upgrading the lift stations, four and six of them? You're going to get.
I'll bring that too, yeah, absolutely.
For planning purposes, you're going to send so important, seven.
If you look down the list, you'll see everything. The Seak and Sewer Cleanouts, Stoneback E over in Stellamaris, we had them scheduled to cut those out. We were going to fill it, but they canceled on us because of rain. They did not give us a date, but they assured we it would be done in September. So we're just going to work in conjunction with them to get over there and get that knocked out. They did tell me they'd give me a two day warning so that I can go for the door knocker on everyone's door, just so their cars not parked over it when we come to do it.
I think most of them are not here anywhere.
Yeah, I hardly ever see anyone parked over, there's only one actually. The security camera quote, I had them update that to add the two cameras that you guys had requested. It raised the quote to $16,500 and that's because there's no wiring for those two cameras that they're going to add. So the other three or four cameras, there was wiring already there, but for the two they're going to add, they have to run the wiring. They can move forward on that as soon as you tell me to go with it. What do you think about that? So we started at 11 to 12, now we're at 16.
I think it sounds like a lot of money for wiring and we should get a couple other There's got to be more than one person that does security, lighting and cameras.
Who did you contact? So I called Global and Century. Century came and looked, they never, never gave me an estimate. Global came and looked, they gave me the estimate and then you asked for the updated, they came back and looked and gave me the updated. Who's, I was global, they, global's got the experience. How many cameras were in the original quote? I think three or four.
Four and we.
Four, and we're going to add two more.
Make it six.
So if it was 12 grand, the first were out with four cameras, that's about three grand a camera. So if we add two more cameras, that's a total of six grand, so the increase may not be all that crazy.
Right.
And I think we decided we, we absolutely have to have those.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What about the lights? So the lights, I got quotes from the lights too, but we, the lights on the sewer plant work and I just.
Well, I just want, yeah, just replace the bulbs.
So we, we do that and I, I always get the lights off because when they're on, it collects like a bazillion bugs, so we're constantly spraying bugs off. But after the last meeting, I've got the lights coming on now. We'll see if it's all. I did get two quotes, I got two contractors to come out and look, they haven't gave me the quotes yet to change everything to LED, but the ones that the, also bad will destroy and change, so.
Hey, Mitch.
Yes, sir.
Mitch, would it be, would it be really insane to talk to ADT and see if they do anything on that level that we could, instead of buying the stuff, we could pay them monthly and they manage it? Do they do that?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how that works for a commercial property or a utility, but absolutely, I mean.
I mean, I think, I'd rather than own the stuff, what do we want to own it for? Maybe if ADT, they're a big outfit, they're looking for business, if they will, they must do, they do commercial properties, they do hotels. I mean, it wouldn't hurt to call them and see, because this is not a big deal. And rather than buy it, let's just pay them monthly.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's.
So we just put it off for a month until we.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for doing it, but let's just, let's consult them and see if they'll come out and do it. I know they do commercial properties and they're going to have state of the art stuff and if something dies, they fix it. I, I just don't, if we don't have to own the equipment, I'd rather not.
Okay, I'll give them a call and get them to come out.
Are there any other comparable? I mean, you know. I'm sure there are. Just unsure. Yeah. I'm cheap, I usually say files.
They were, they were out of medicals.
Well, if you think of it, so.
Oh, yeah, I'll check it out.
The lighting, I mean, I'm not sure ADT is going to put the security down, but you're still working on that.
The lighting, I've got it turned on back at the sewer plant, you'll see that. I'll change all the bulbs. I'll bring you the two quotes for LEDs at the next meeting and then you tell me if you like how it's lit up the way it is. Well, I think we've got enough light bulbs out there already. I think, you know, I just get them working, that's all.
They're still going to have the bug problem, all right? People.
Yeah, bug problem. Move the spray bubbles down. I don't, I don't know why it is, but the lights attract bugs. Come in, there's a million dead. Backflow prevented handles, so we've been going through the community, changing out handles. We're about 40% done, but we're having all kinds of issues because the old handles were not stainless, the studs are not stainless, so the stud is breaking off sometimes, we're having to eat them with a torch. So it's a slow process. And then once I get them all switched out, I might have to come back to you and say, okay, this 23 or 35 or however many broke and we're going to have to replace the valve on those. So I'll be back to you with that at a later date. The water meters, we changed out 647. You're digital now and I got some comparisons here on the back page. We still have a little over 100 to change out. Those are the bigger ones, the one inch irrigation, the two inch, inch and a half, and those should be coming in. We actually haven't received those yet. They should be showing up here any day, I believe. And once they get here, we'll, we'll get in there, knock them out.
Could Mitch, the summary you did, that was requested by Supervisor Earl Towne, is there, did you run a total on that?
Yeah, I was, I was looking.
Oh, do you want a total? I could run the total. So, pardon me.
It looks like. It looks like, you know, some are higher, some are lower, and what's the overall?
That is true, so I, so I don't have access to the billing software, so I only have access to what we read. So we went back and pulled the reads from last year and came up with the, you know, you can see what their usage was last year. And then we, we came back and took the read from the electronic for this cycle for the first eighty, and we put that in comparison. I mean, I can have the girls total that.
This is what was requested, where you have actual readings for an entire billing cycle.
Yes, so this is, this is the first eighty, so this is a full billing cycle. And if you go to the first one, like you can see, the new usage was twenty-two thousand gallons and zero last year. I don't know why that is, but if you jump to the next one, Wilderness Gate, they use seventy-six thousand in the next, in the. But same month last year was forty-four. And so forth and so down. And you can see some are more and some are less. And I've actually had a bunch of calls, because the bills came out, and a lot of people that they're actually using more water. And I had a few that called me in today, I'm using less water.
See, I didn't call, because my bill was lower.
No, we get a lot of those calls, we're, you know.
Yeah, I was afraid of that, that's why I wanted to feel.
But these are readers, now, I'll tell you, we just had a situation where, you know, a guy filled a pool, and he knew the rules. That he shouldn't contact us, Mitch, go out, put a reader on, we'll get an actual reading. But they had to do some repairs on the pool, so they drained it halfway, and the workers just filled it again. And he said, you know, can I get the credit? And he says, I understand that stuff and didn't contact you, but Mitch was able to go out there. He told me when he was filling the pool, and he's able to go out and get a reading during that cycle. Hourly, right?
Yeah, and it read flat. It will say, okay, on September the first through the third, this customer was using over ten percent, his normal average. And it automatically puts it as a red flag. And then we know, okay, he filled his pool or had a line break or whatever. And then I had a lady call, and she's like, my water bill, it can't be. We went out, it actually was. It, she had a timer on the side of the house that was running the hose that ran some little makeshift irrigation, and it was just running, 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 running. So it was, it was.
And we always follow that basic principle. Rule number one, if it goes through the beater, it's yours. If it doesn't, if it's ours, it wouldn't go through the beater. So, you know, there's a leak. Before the beater, then Mitch takes care of that, but it wouldn't have read on their bill because it went through. Mitch has been able to find a lot of leaks that people, their plumbers, too.
Yeah, there's one seventy-four Sunset Cave, the taller house. From the pipes at the ground, I think they're ours, it's spraying water. And to the extent it's growing weeds across the site.
Right now, is it?
Yes.
I think I sent someone out, I got a call about that one, yeah, this week, and I sent some blah, oh.
I hear it, but I walk my dogs.
Yeah, this looks like it's an Excel spreadsheet, if you just.
Yeah, it's actually, the girls asked me if I want it totaled, and I got it, so that's on me.
I think that'd be a better indicator than individual.
Gotcha, okay.
I think it'll work better.
Say yes.
When, when we're at season.
This thing would have been twelve layers thick.
Okay, that's good work.
That it for me?
No, I've got a couple questions, alright. I was told at the end of Stellamaris Drive Sound, there is a.
Auto flusher.
Yes, is it an auto flusher? They used to come down and open the valve, because it's a closed-loop system.
I fixed everything, it's all automatic.
Okay, thank you, that's question number one. And the other thing is, when we're biking, when we go down Venus K, the first manhole. If you just have your guys check that, I mean, it stinks. And it's just the first manhole, when you're going down Venus K. Is it, it may be a detonator in there, but if they check it, I appreciate it.
If it is coming through, we can put an inflow plug in there, it's kind of holding it, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it? No, alright.
Nothing really at this point. You know, it's, I feel bad with construction going on, and we're going to be getting on to that for this next month. Okay, I'll probably send a draft letter that we'll be using, just to inform people that they've got some crack driveway, cracked sidewalk or whatever that needs to be addressed.
Right, if there's some drainage swells too, like you get a.
Plus, we've been, as new construction happens, we can try and log those in and keep track of those. But now's probably the time to, but formalizing a little bit more as far as what they need to do to fix things and get it done.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful to copy the county building department also, because the county comes out to do their inspections. We'll see that job sites are messy or not messy, or clean or not clean. Because you have, you can pull the building permit up, which would be.
Yeah, we've met some of the building permit numbers already.
Maybe just copy the county building department. They may not do anything, but it's.
These new homeowners are, I get enjoyment out of them, but I have one stop me and say that, you know, they had a dumpster, but the house being built, such and such, did not have a dumpster. And as I'm standing there, I'm looking at that other house, and there's the dumpster.
It's been surprising to me over the last month or so, you know, some of the houses were going really quick being built, and all of a sudden now they've stopped.
Well, one neighbor told me they can't get her tile for twenty-two months. So she has to change her roof. That's what it's going to be.
Oh, it's, just like our, our dock, some of our docks are being redone. They can't get, they can't get the boards to put there, it's just like.
I'm wondering if there's some issues too with the interior finish materials too, that there's charges. But, you know, I was just surprised that, you know, things are ground to almost a hole in some of the houses. So Mark Maris, we really haven't done anything since the last meeting. You know, we wanted not to, to use the project to this point. I think the next steps is probably getting together with Stellamaris and talking about the drainage, how we want to split things up. But right now, pricing is really crazy out there, so if we put it off a little bit longer, hopefully those prices start coming down again. Almost paying double what you should right now with things.
How bad is it right now with the spraying season?
Not that bad. You were out there last month.
I haven't been here for a month.
I don't know what it's like now, but in fact, the drainage ditch is, you know, I drove around this morning a little bit, I guess it hasn't rained yet.
We haven't rained for four days.
Pretty dry right now.
The, from what my notes required the last meeting, is that Ford did not want a bid bond and to rebid. I'm not sure if that was, if you actually wanted bids to consider, or are you just trying to see if it would be a reduction in cost or before you actually made a decision?
Like, I thought our discussion was we were going to rebid it when it was economically, when it's economically feasible, and take the, take the bond off at the, at the rebid. That was my impression.
So do some paperwork too, as far as the assembly cost between the roadway repairs versus.
Right, right, we wanted to split it out, because Frank and I will need to meet with you and we can sit down to discuss all that.
On this report, it mentions the silt in roadway gutters.
Yes.
I've never seen any of that cleaned out.
No, that's something we need to jump the, some of the builders about, is getting that cleaned out. One of the worst things we got out there right now is somebody took their trust package and slayed over part of it.
Oh, I know, and the rebar is on the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
It's just going to put all that grass field managers around the sidewalk too, so those residents can't walk on. But silt in the gutter, and that's just going to.
Right, it just backs up a little bit, you know, if it was down the gutter, winds up hitting the drainage ditches, fills the silt in there, and they're actually, it goes to the control structure. So we do need to get that.
They should either sweep it up or, I'd say.
Do some branding too, to keep them from going down.
I have a question, since we're on that, on page twenty-three, the rusted deck grate. It says it's our, our responsibility, is that correct?
Yes.
We did not know that.
Yeah, that'd be your responsibility.
Well, yeah, no, but you're going to find the grate force and then we're going to reimburse you, is that the answer? Okay, that's fine.
And then basically, you said that you guys have the information, then you would.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, that's fine. Alright, fine. I mean, you've got it blocked off, so nobody parks on it, because if next time somebody sits on it, they're going in. They're going down.
Yeah. District manager report?
Okay, you've got the financials, and again, they're still in great shape. You know, from being broke two years ago to where you're at now, it's really remarkable. The, we did have a mistake in here that our CPA didn't catch, control, nobody caught, Kerry caught it. So it's an entry that was lost, so they'll have that, they're getting a hundred dollars. We put it instead of sixty-nine, put sixty-six.
What was it, two hundred and seventy, something's transposed.
Well, it's two seventy. So I said it's redone, right, it's just wrong.
Yeah, well, it was three hundred between the entry and the invoice, but when you added the two invoices, the difference was two hundred and seventy. And that's, that signs the transposed number. It might have been when the two were added. I'm not sure which number is right.
He's corrected it, though, he looked at what you identified.
Yeah, I have a lot.
He was really embarrassed by it. I've got to see the paper to say.
Yeah, I get bored of it.
Maybe doing our purpose, so Kerry can catch it.
I have one other question, on your balance sheet. Are we on financials? On the balance sheet, why is, we have two cash accounts, then we have three other accounts, or four, and then we have the investment account. Shouldn't all three cash accounts be together?
That's hard enough to know.
Yeah, what happens, yeah, it's just that your balance sheet, general ledger account number. Because what happens, you look at this, and then I look at your report on the cash, and I always got to look for that third number. Because they're not together, your cash accounts.
Yeah.
That just makes it easier on the reading.
Okay, yeah, well, I.
This is Mitch. See up here, Mitch? You've got to get this. Get your true Mitch. So if you remove that account up there, then you know where you're at. Best hits a one-month account.
Is that for the money, so?
Most of it, yeah.
That's both.
So, okay, yeah, I'll.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure, the numbers are right. You know, I was.
Yeah, just the general ledger account number, so when you write a report, it drops it down there. Yeah, if you can.
Sure.
Thank you. The findings, let's look at.
Any other questions? Just need a motion to accept them.
I put a motion to accept the financials as presented.
The next item is something that I think might be needed. There's a lot of issues that come up all the time, and then we have to go through, you know, fifteen years of history. And to be able to find out what it was and what happened back when, and we just, it's really hard to do. Because we don't have a timeframe. The only person that has that timeframe is Ron Benson, who's been here forever, since I think the first show was three months. And, but Ron's retired, and he does some work for Ole Montez, but I don't know how long he's going to be here. And I think it would be good if he collected everything, if he's got, you know, the history behind it, and put it into a book that we could keep. It'd be part of your official records, that all the board members would also have it. I just started going through some of those issues that we had, such as the ERC assignment and changes. And we're going to be discussing that next week, but at the same time, you know, you should have a good, strong history on it. And there's a couple memos I've done that I've given you, but I'm not sure that it's as comprehensive as what Ron could do. The history between parcel thirteen, the North Hotel, the water and the wastewater plants. I mean, you've got a newer wastewater plant sitting there that's going to be, you know, that's right now closed. You know, I think you guys all realize it's probably never going to be open, but what's the history behind that? And Ron can identify it. So I just, I listed a lot of different things. Signage rules, you've got signage rules, but, you know, what prompted it? Why did the signage rules come into effect? And so I did a short search on that, and came up with nine pages of some minutes back in, when Mona Wani was here. And it's, there's just, we have a lot of stuff. But every time I get a new board member, or, you know, a resident, or a developer, or somebody says, you know, we'd like to see this, well, what am I going to do? You've got fifteen years of record receipts, and, you know, we have all of that, but that's twelve times fifteen, you know, or twenty. You know, that's, that's a lot of records. And we could consolidate that into a historical summary of those key issues, and there might be others, whatever you guys think. Now, I pushed Ron to see what, you know, he thought it would take. And he said, well, you know, it would, he'd have to run it through Ole Montez. I said, well, why would you have to run it through Ole Montez? We'll provide you all the support you need, we got the rest of them. But, you know, and we'll provide that to them, but couldn't you do it less expensive? I mean, Ole Montez is going to charge about a hundred dollars an hour. And he said, well, let me check, if somebody came back, Ole Montez has been working, you know, independently, has solved and put this together. And for this billing rate, it'd be a hundred dollars an hour, which for a PhD engineer, probably pretty cheap. Anyway, I think that, I think we can keep it down easily under fifty hours. You know, he and I talk about thirty, but I hate to, you know, I don't know how many other topics you guys might want to add, but, you know, I think that.
So basically, you're going to have somebody working with components, not just.
Oh, yeah, we'll feed them all with the minutes or whatever you want, but you'll break it down into a summary. So that if you've got a question of why, what's the history of the dormitory? He's got, what's the history of Lake, Lincoln or Lake Huron, Huron or just both? He's got all of it.
And he does this, is it going to be computerized? In other words, if I want to research something with a keyword, that you can follow it up?
Searchable data thing.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I'm sure he would put it in a Word doc. In fact, we'll give him an HTML, and we can put it right on the website as well. Yeah, if it's on the website, it has to be an HTML, but we can give them access to the website, where he can actually write that, those documents on that. And, you know, not looking at including resolutions or meds or all of that that he'll capture, and it would be within that topic.
Why does it want it all on the website?
Well, I just, you know, I'm searching.
Yeah, it would say, somebody wanted to look up something.
If you want it on the website, it almost has to be, at least the. If you want it on the website, it almost has to be, at least the verbiage, has to be in HTML, so that it's eighty-eight font. But you didn't do it in Word, and, you know, we can even convert it if we decide, you could do it that way. I can submit an electronic copy, and, you know, all of this research, we would have it electronically that you would have available all the histories of POI, the three officials of POI. And so you'd have that electronically that we could provide anyone that requested it, because it would become a public document.
I mean, you could also P E F make it searchable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe, which is, because the problem with Word, we.
Yeah, you have to have.
I'm talking about, Ron, so you mentioned Word, Word can be edited easier than, yeah, you can make it, so you can edit it for search.
Can't make any changes. I think that's, that's important, do that, and another big advantage of that is, well, I guess you could confirm this, you and Michelle, when you're new on the board, you're green, you know some of it, but you have a whole bunch of questions, and you feel really stupid if you don't know the history.
Right.
So.
That history goes back thirty years, even further than Ron, yeah, with Ron's knowledge.
Right.
And of course, you'll have access to our records at the office, that's something.
The, yeah, I mean, I did a lot, just new board members come on, and other people, their, their perspective of what happened in the past isn't that. So then, before it's ever thought of, is one way or another, it's right there. You can see what the board action, what, what the issues were, you know.
Let me ask you this, part of this, isn't, haven't we indirectly paid for those records?
The records are there.
Right.
They're still in there.
Okay.
So what if it organized?
Right.
Yeah, and again, to the extent that, for example, the bankruptcy records, they're all, it's called a PACER, case locators, federal court records system.
Right.
And we have an accountant for that, so to the extent that there are any records there, there might be help from Ron, because I pulled some of those records, and there was affidors from Ron, I've been able to tell.
Yeah.
Deposition transfer experts from Ron, that it might be a power of all some, so all work with Caroline, Ron on that issue also.
So that makes us happy, if you're happy.
Well, no, I mean, that, again, that system is relatively inexpensive, it's amazing, it's expensive, it is. But it's just been a wealth of information I've found already going back to nineteen-ninety, puts in the resolution.
I think you should do.
So it's where we're like, all the tech properties.
Yes. Everything I've got on the list are the things that I think, you know, from the vacant land, part of the code here.
Yeah. You wanna add?
Well, no, I, I, I just.
Yeah.
I mean, like, some things, signage, what's that? Well, you've had a lot of issues with signage, and, you know, but we've tried to work with the county, but, yeah, it's like a property that wants to put signage. Go to the county, go to the, now typically, right now, we say just go to the county, but they, they gotta get signage from there. But he would have that history, that somebody asked you, well, what do I gotta do to get a sign up on the median of, of a union role? Okay, this would explain that.
What about the update of this record?
Well, we wouldn't do that, yeah. I mean, we've got everything not organized like this, but, you know, for the five years, we've got our manager, and we're gonna stay, yeah, we would keep it going forward.
I think it's something that should be.
Well.
Once the price, yeah?
Well, then it's a hundred dollars an hour, and, you know, so whatever he puts into it, I thought fifty hours would be more than enough, but what does he? So what he and I thought, we thought it'd be forty.
At least the things that come out is without probably.
Yeah.
They could do it not to exceed.
Yeah, to exceed, but that's, that's what I propose, that I could exceed five thousand dollars, using his services at a hundred dollars an hour, and we'll just provide everything else, and we'll do the printing, we'll do whatever, but. Yeah, he thinks he can do it, I mean, he knows exactly.
So this is gonna be shit.
Where this is gonna be a bummer for us, that's why I want to make sure, right? I believe that it would be very valuable for, you know, the board, the public records request.
Yeah, and we have budget for it.
Right.
Specifically not for that.
Yeah.
Paying the money in the.
You know, we're approaching now, we're taking all the old, well, we, well, we have to provide records, minutes, resolutions, invoices for a certain period of number, but record of proceedings, we have to keep throughout it, and we have them current. But, I mean, you know, that's thirty years of meeting every month, where you've got a packet of events, it's pretty thick. It's everything, the notice of manager, it's the any resolutions, there's the minutes, invoices, okay.
Well, I, I think that, that's all on good, but it would need to be prioritized, too, in case we get the hour mark.
Sure.
Happening, you know, like, I mean, the fire department, I mean, fire department's the fire department.
Well, but there's a lot of history there, I don't know if the board knows, but when I was with Southern Trent, you guys were actually looking and building your own fire department. Oh, you know, talking about, we said we were gonna get them on early.
The fire.
Yeah.
As compared to last meeting, this is early.
What's with the fire department?
Is that, you know, on like, above the fire hydrants?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, I, it's a fire station, and everything that went into it, so that you guys are aware. I mean, the board was looking at buying property, building a fire station, so that they could be able to come in, and, you know, and Kevin admitted, you know, we didn't have enough money. So then, you know, the county came in with this offer to, and they put them in on a temporary basis at the South Hotel, and then they negotiated for purchase of that property with Sheard, and, you know, I understand what's there, but, I mean, it was an issue before I joined Southern Trent for a long time, that was always a goal of the board, was to get a fire station.
Well, my, my point just being is, I don't wanna run out of time or out of money, and something like this, so the important thing is the history we're gonna need for future development here, the parcel thirteen, right, anything that's still yet, has to be developed, the land over by the hotels. So that should be top of the list, the bottom of the list, stuff that's obviously important.
Well, if, if.
My studio spring.
Well.
Unless it changes.
Now, sure, and we need to describe what we're doing now, and, you know, what, right, everything. That, that doesn't take a lot of time, and several of these aren't gonna take a lot of time, I mean, we've already got, I've already done a lot of historical search on this and issued memos to the boards, it, I had this going. It seems like every day, there's something new that somebody's asking about, that it takes, you know, ten hours of my time to go ahead and research it.
So we don't wanna do the easy stuff, we're gonna do the hard stuff.
Well, the thing's that you have to post priority. And what I would suggest is, if the board wants to do this, that each of you send me either a priority, you know, maybe your top three, four, or five, you know, items, either going off this list, or if you see others, then I'll consolidate those and send out another email and say that these are the priorities that's been established by the board, you know, five people wanted this, and three people wanted that, and then say that this is how we're gonna prioritize them, and then work with Ron in there.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent idea, because it's, you don't wanna, as a new person on the board, you don't wanna reinvent the wheel. You know, but it'd be nice to know history when, you know, when you're, before you start discussing it.
So we're ready for a motion? I'm gonna make a motion to not exceed the fifty hours and hire Ron Benson to create the history.
Okay, but when are we gonna start this, for?
I would just see, we'd start next week, what we'll do is prioritize those topics, and I'm gonna send it out to everyone, and then just send me a response back by an email. And then we'll put that out, I'll distribute it to everyone, and then Ron will probably start next week.
I also don't wanna limit Ron, if he comes across another topic that's never been thought of, I would hope he's going to create a division for that, you know.
I think he has to come back to the board if he's gonna exceed it.
Right.
Because I don't think he should ever have anything open-ended.
Yeah.
I also do suck at that.
No.
Yeah, I think you should talk about the topics.
Talk about topics, if he's, you know, starting to organize things, and he sees, oh, you guys, how about this, you know?
It's a pretty good list.
It is a great list, I think it's really.
And what, once I get your priorities, we'll prioritize them, one, two, three, all the way down to the end, and anything you wanna add, then I'll send it to Ron, and say, these are the priorities the board has, what's your thoughts? Do you think something's more important, or less important, or do you know other items that should be added to this?
I, I think Russ is right there, let's go for the stuff that's pertinent right now, right up front, so that we're, you know, we get a history of some of this stuff. So that, you know, may, helps us make decisions that are going forward on things that are topical, not, you know.
Hey, Cal.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd like to second that motion, I think it's critically important, but I've got, as an aside, two questions related to it. One, I don't know the answer to this, I don't know if you do either, but when they started the, the CID originally, did they have, they must have had rules, regulations, some sort of archive and a formula for the ERCs? And I'd like to know, you know, if they did, they must have, and who's got it, where that is. Secondly, and I don't know the answer to this, but I'm, think I'm getting to it, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, but I'd like to find out prior to the seventeenth. I'm of the impression now that Ron, he's been, he was with the CID thirty years, that Ron had a lot to do with the initial allocation of the ERCs, or POI, and I'd like either you or Dave to just ask him that question. And just say, you know, how involved were you in the initial allocation of the ERCs? And it wasn't plating, but, you know, the plating of it. And, you know, before the seventeenth, I'd like to have that answer, because I think he could be really helpful.
Yeah, but Ray, even if it wasn't he himself, I believe it's that engineering firm that.
Right, well, you're right.
Yeah.
I think it was him himself, but you're right.
I, I think there was actually another engineering firm involved, with an East Coast engineering firm originally, and that may have been what, how it got developed. I've just recalled little pieces and so forth that I've heard of on time. But, yeah, Ron would have a better idea on some of these things, as far as how that original allocation was developed.
Yeah. Um, as, as an example, and purely by coincidence, I was talking to the guys up back at the shooting range, and Lou said to me that, you know, Ron had come to him at some point, and said, you know, do you want two ERCs? And he didn't want them, and Ron suggested, well, I think you should hold on to them for a while, because you may wanna put restrooms back at the pistol range, as an example. So I don't know when they did that, but it was Ron that did that discussion. So somebody did it, and I'd just like to know maybe what he knows about it prior to the seventeenth, because I think it would really streamline things, you know?
The oldest record we can find on it, we've got all the records for the creation, the, you know, the organization of the, the ERCs, the oldest records we could find was in nineteen, or nineteen-ninety.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So, but it's nothing before that, and I can't even think right now when the initial establishment resolution was, but probably three or four years, or any longer, maybe it's thirty years, so.
Yeah, just a guess.
Yeah, so, but all of that would be assembled in this, but we'll get as much, I mean, obviously, ERCs is gonna be one of the top discussion items on the seventeen. We've got some rules that we're also proposing that be changed, be added, and other than that, I, I don't believe, Ray, that there was any rules before ninety.
I think you're right, but wasn't, wasn't Ron the engineer of record when the CID was established? And I think that was nineteen-ninety. If he's with us thirty years, that would make sense.
I don't know Ron, but he'll, he'll be able to put it all together, and he'll get as much as we, you know, copy for the resolutions, or whatever, and, and, you know, the board will hash it out on some, see if we come up with.
I need you to add, we have, I didn't like, just to add something to that list, as far as just, you don't have the gun range on there.
Okay. And both those, and again, I'll send out, it might be Chris Dudeck, but send out a memo that will identify these items with the two additions, prioritize them, we'll put a little, little blank, long side of them, and just write what your top priority is, your second, and bring them all the way down. And if you've got new ones, throw, we'll put that on there, too, and then if we get some new ones, we'll send it back out, just say, you know, we've had to add these, they'll be at the bottom of the list unless somebody says, unless you guys feel they should develop.
You have orthic code undeveloped.
Yes, that would be like thinking like Huron.
Right, and that's because it has ERCs on it?
They have some ERCs, right.
What about that big parcel by Stella Morris South, that big empty lot?
That's part of Stella, that's part of the villages, that's all part of M-two, I think, is it, or M-one?
But isn't that considered undeveloped?
Pardon me?
Isn't that parcel considered?
It's not a separate parcel, it's all part of the same, they own that.
Okay.
I'll call the question, more move fast, yeah, call the question, so we can vote on it. All right, we need to call the question, so we can vote on this.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so all in favor, you got a second from today?
Right.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, you wanna take the fire.
Yeah.
They patiently have been waiting.
Well, they've only been in there, that's a third.
Are you gonna bring out the microphone? Yes. That way everyone's in the room, and you're still. Yeah, should be out.
Again, here's a button.
Oh, you're running.
Get your.
That was last week, political debate.
Yeah, like beat that.
Yeah. Move, G group, move away from. No. You have eight fibs, I can tell you.
Yeah, I'll be real brief, so you can get going, I didn't wanna take up any of your time, I just, and I'd like to introduce, that's our fire chief, Chief Dolan Sat, Greater Naples. He came by with me to babysit me. Make sure I'm getting out of control, I just wanted to follow up with last week's situation. But I didn't wanna give you some warm, fuzzy, political answer, make everybody feel good, I, I'm skin in the game, too. I live in this area, I was raised in this area, and I wanted to, you know, get with my chief, do the responsible thing, and present all the facts to you. There will be no loss of any kind of ALS service there, regardless of whatever the county does, it doesn't matter, Greater Naples will always have an ALS paramedic at the state. And I'm fortunate enough, you guys might know me, I'll give you a quick little rundown, because I used to just try to briefly come here in the mornings to these meetings, and then just slip out, just to show support, I, I live in this community, like I said, I have skin, I don't live at the port, I live east of here, but I consider this my area, and I pay the high-dollar taxes, too, and pay my formals, and I don't get street lights, I don't get beautiful medians, but it is what it is. And I pay $100 taxes too and pay my formals and I don't get street lights. I don't get beautiful medians, but it is what it is. Um, so I know all the stuff that goes on anyway, but, um, any history that you want to know about that fire department? I was at every weekly construction meeting. I can tell you how it all started or it came from. I was the, uh, former Ochopee assistant chief. So, and you know, any of this stuff, I mean, I'm, I consider this area my home. I was taken away from here for a little bit. Reassigned in Naples area under previous administration. And that's about time the board changed also, because the other board was very familiar with me, knew all about me and this and that. But, uh, Chief Sapp came on board, took over, realized the importance of putting me back up here instead of wasting me in some other space up there. And, uh, he's allowed me to come back to my community, serve it, you know, oversee it, and he trusts me and allows me to do what I do. But, uh, I mean, I consider you guys, even though I've had to say I live east of here, I consider this my home too, Eric. You know, friends and family. Um, and I just wanted to come back to ensure to you guys, there will be no loss of service over there.
Great.
There's a loss of service.
I want to take up, I don't want to take up too much of the time, but any questions that you ever need from me about the fire department? I know every day it's a challenge at every construction meeting, everything. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Noel Sapp. I'm the current fire chief of Greater Naples Fire Rescue, I've been at Collier County in the fire service for 30, 31 years and then 12 years in Kentucky. So I've been, been doing it since a week or two. Uh, just to give you a little update, Caleb says, uh, you, you've not had any reduction in service. What you've had is a change of employees. The, uh, Collier County medic that used to be on the medic unit across the street was replaced by our medic back when COVID first started. Uh, Collier County EMS elected to pull their personnel off everybody's truck, uh, and keep them on their trucks because of COVID and try to minimize any exposure and everything. So when they did that, we just moved one of our paramedics. And, uh, that's, that's stayed that way for well over a year already. So no reduction there at all. Anytime we bring this truck into town, we have another truck come out, even if it's a medical squad to cover this, cover this area to make sure that you maintain coverage at all times. And if they get tied up, we've sent to everybody in city to back up those units, we send a unit out to back that out. So that's one of the good things you've got going on now is it's no longer a two-station organization. You now have the ability of 16 stations that, that come out here if need be for whatever. And we maintained that, uh, for years now, uh, since we started the interlocal agreement with Collier County. The current status of that is we're in the process of renegotiating the interlocal agreement to cover Everglades City and Ochopee. So that's still in the process. Uh, the county has postponed the meeting two or three times. Uh, our legal counsel and us, uh, are trying to move forward with the annexation of Ochopee and Everglades City into our district permanently. Uh, but there's got to be some things that county has to agree to. We have to work out. Apparates that are going to be replaced because the trucks here are going to have to be replaced. The county's going to have to work with us on replacement of those vehicles and so forth and get us up to speed on where we need to be. But, uh, there's been rumors that we were backing out of that agreement. We were moving away and so forth, and that's not true. We're renegotiating the agreement. And the agreement is eventually everybody out here will vote whether or not they want to be part of Greater Naples Fire Rescue, which I strongly encourage you to do. Again, you, you move from a two-stage coverage to 16 that dip back your community up. So we're here for you 24/7. You also get the advantage of, uh, the battalion chiefs that's available. Of course Caleb's always going to be here. I can't get him to do that. He tries to snort it out.
Some of my people.
So he, he, he has a solid footprint now and we're proud of that. But I just didn't want anybody to have bad information that your community had a reduction in service or anything because we've, we've enhanced that service. Uh, we've been looking at trying to acquire land just west of here, just west of 92 to build a station between here and in town. We're working with the county right now to try to secure that property. We own land, but the county wants to buy it from us. So we're trying to buy the land across the street from us so we can build that station. So there will even be another station out this way that have backed up services out here, hopefully in the next four or five years. So there, there's constantly work going on to enhance your service, to make sure you've got what you need out here, that you have the best service available out here and let, let there be a little bit of depth where it's, we, we've not forgotten anybody or not providing what you need. And if you ever feel that way, please feel free to reach out to me or Caleb. Caleb is probably the quickest on the ground, who answers out here all the time. So just call the office and ask, ask me if you have any questions and so forth. I did go visit Commissioner Castro the other day when I found out he was, uh, kind of deflecting the service that had been reduced. Rumors or whatever, and I did ensure him that that was not the fact. The only thing that had been reduced is EMS having a footprint in this station. Uh, I'd love to have a medic unit in that station, which is totally root for on trucks. But again, when we build a station that's west of here, we're going to have a complimentary medic unit in there. Share zones. We're, we're all going to work together. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question. This interlocal agreement, this is going to be the third time it's renewed, isn't it?
Uh, in my history, it's probably the third time.
Yeah. And so if, uh, it's going to eventually go on the ballot to be under Greater Naples, why hasn't that happened?
It went before the state legislature last year and their staff in Tallahassee killed it. There were over 3,500 bills submitted to, uh, the legislature for approval and they only heard about 50% of them. And staff killed the, the bill. We felt like we had a good, uh, the chance of getting it heard, but somebody in their staff in legislature, which politics got involved with somebody that their bill ahead of ours, ours ended up not getting heard. So that's why we were pushing it forward. We had legal council representation up there, uh, but staff killed it there.
One other question. This famous FELT money payment through the taxes, uh, does Greater Naples, does anybody listen to you guys about giving us some of, of that money to help our military?
Well, we, we have talked to the county about that. We're still in conversation, so I don't, I don't have any more details on it. For that, but again, we're, we're trying to, for us to take over this area, we can't do it at 1.5%.
I know.
Those things have to occur in the state legislature, such as they're going to have to permit us to have two different militaries. Uh, until the growth really takes off out here, it's kind of stuck with that. That's, I, I can't, I gotta be honest, for us to take it on, so they get in with the, uh, the interstate station. Well, the state keeps hassling us about that agreement. We have a 10-year contract with them and then they walk away from it.
Yeah, I think most don't know that, uh, that one fire station, the DOT supplements a lot of that money. And I believe this year.
The last year they told us they weren't going to pay us at all. In the 11th hour, they, they came forward. Uh, I went to DOT and I said, you know, I'm going to put publicly out there, we can NBC that you're putting public safety at risk. And honestly, their quote was, people hate DOT. And I told them, I said, that station requires $1.4 million to be here to operate. If you take that station out of the equation, our response time goes to an hour to get there. Those trucks only go so fast. Their government, about 65, as a matter of fact, when they get on the interstate cars are.
Passing them.
They're passing them. Uh, but in the 11th hour, DOT came forward and said, we're going to pay you for fiscal year 2021. There's no guarantee for 2022, but, uh, Senator Pasadoma becomes the chair of the senate this year. So with that said, we feel we have a good chance working with her to get that, that funding secured for that. Because I, I related to the state and said, 13% of the population that goes across that interstate country, Collier County, by Greater Naples, Ochopee, from Collier County. So why would Greater Naples have to pay for the bulk of that, for all of that? When the bulk of the traffic is, you know, interstate traffic from all over. So we're, we're, we're working with that. We're working with state leadership, uh, working with county officials to say, well, the state don't pick it up. You're going to work with us on this. Make sure we do that.
Yeah, the state's giving us the money. It just goes into the general fund and then we don't get it. So I'm trying to understand the.
The FELT money you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
It's going to go into the general fund.
Right.
So that needs, that would need to change. But I'm trying to understand the military, because if we come under Greater Naples, right? And we're at four, I mean, I got my last statement that said if the budget is approved, I go from 3.87 to four, I'll back up. Well, you're going to, so why am I going back up?
You won't be going back to four, you're going to three.
Yeah, that's, I think.
That's a bunch of sheet I, I should have brought up.
That's.
But what happens is we can only charge 3.75 as a maximum with state and state. So that's all we'll be able to charge. It's a maximum with special five. So anything above that is required for, for, for the county, you're going to have to make that difference. Till it gets to a point where it's going to start to offset that.
You know, uh, I got my place on the market. The police and fire together, it's only 1.7. I know they've got a lot, I know there's a lot of.
They have a lot of.
Charge, yeah, I get it. Still.
I understand. But it's just, it's just a fact.
So, so the military is set at state level for you?
Uh, no, it's set by the taxpayer. We, if we want to make our village rate change, it has to be voted on by the taxpayer. But the referendum, right, Ochopee and Everglades City, and it's going to spell out that that village rate, if approved by the voters to come into Greater Naples, will have to retain, be retained 3.75.
Okay.
So it's, you don't count on seeing that reduce any of the near future?
Well, it has been though. It was higher.
Yes, and, and as.
I was going to say it was 4.5. I remember that.
As the district grows, you will see that reduce. We firmly believe the growth is going to occur coming out this way.
Is, um, I thought that, I mean, maybe you know if there's any way to change it, the way, uh, when there's, uh, a property like a trailer, it's not just land. If the fire charge, the military is only charged on the land instead of the total values. Is there any way to change that? Does that, maybe where that is, like, I mean, like a, a trailer, a, a $100,000 trailer pays 20 bucks a year for fire coverage.
They can change it whenever it's permanently attached.
Yes, that's right.
Mobile, it's a mobile travel driver type situation.
Yes.
Yes.
It's not lying.
But it has to be permanently attached. Once that occurs, then.
So you have to change the law. Some, some law has to be changed.
Well, it's on the value of the land. If that trailer's going to be different each time, that's going to change the value.
Right, so if it's.
I know that's idiotic.
It's like the boat, the boat slips. Can't guarantee the income from that boat, it's going to switch out.
Those places have been there for 30 years and have the movement left them.
That's permanent, no.
No, they're paying 20 bucks. They're paying on the land. That's it.
Lucky, lucky.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're still trading.
Yeah, they don't.
Any other questions that I can answer?
I'll say.
I'll put you at ease.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Your service is, I'm going to be, we're working very hard to make sure.
Now you guys, you've helped me out a lot.
Now, where exactly did you want to build that station though? Is that?
We.
You know where the intersection of Lake Park and 41 is? There's no abandoned gas station.
Oh, that's Lake Park? Oh, yeah.
It's Lake Park.
They're just fixing that place up?
Well, we're, we own the southwest corner of that intersection. We own three acres there.
Okay.
The county wants it for some type of watershed. We gave you 600,000, over 600,000 years ago for that lot. And now the county coughs 300. It's all they can give us. So we could, we could tell them that we don't want that, but the county could always come in and say, yeah.
And then they don't back.
Where it's at, and here's your check. So we're trying to negotiate a deal with the guy directly across the street for eight acres. So we're going to take the money the county's going to give us. Some money that I got the sale of a, a one-acre lot on Sable Palm that had been all underneath. And I will combine that along with some tax dollars to buy that eight acres. We'll, we'll build a facility there where we'll have an engine, uh, an EMS unit and the share zone, so we'll have a presence there.
Yeah, that'll only be five and a half, six miles. It'll be close.
So, you know, your, your back has to bring things significant out here, increases.
How long have they had? It's a thing I hand up like Pepper Ranch, because that was only valued at 13 million. Colicate 33 million for it. So I don't understand why they wouldn't pay you what the state was paying.
I, I argue at that point, but, but, yeah.
I can tell you all, I can tell you why.
Yeah, good run.
Yeah. I was on the conservation fire land acquisition advisory committee that reported no for that appraised value.
Yeah.
Long background.
Yeah.
Backstory that's, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caleb will take good care of you when I can.
Yes.
I don't know if anything, some of the fire advisors report, I'm not that smart.
Okay.
Field report.
Yep.
The, uh, you want to go forward, you want to answer questions? Uh, I don't know if, uh, we're not as late as we are last couple minutes, but, uh, I want to delve into anything too, but that, now, there's a lot of the issues that we're aiming to look at forward to total that Chris identified. Uh, we are looking at the, the torpedoes. I think we're about the end of our rope with, uh, earth guards that are tiny. They've been promising to go over here and the only reason we haven't been nasty with them is because they said that since it's been so long, they're going to do them for free.
Yeah.
But I mean, they're not expensive.
Yeah.
As it is, but, uh, I don't know if that's why he's delaying, but you still have so.
But they, they don't follow up on what they say and I use them.
Yeah.
We're going to discuss what you've been, you've been, you know, and I can follow up. It's.
They are the least expensive of, of all of them. They're, are better for. Uh, the torpedo grass is out of control, but, uh, so we mentioned that, you know, that should be sprayed. Street signage, he's, that's been completed. We saw a couple pictures there. Almost, uh, we haven't gotten any response from DOT. I have no fishing signs on the bridge, but we're staying on. Uh, sidewalks bad. I asked, uh, you know, they're dirty and, uh, asked Chris, you know, if they could do it there. They're not a, a firm that goes out and be like you or me or anyone else going out and spraying it. Uh, but they, they could take care of, you know, and, and they, or they, they could get most of probably caves and Newport Dunn, the main pedestrian thoroughfares, and they can spray that, but, uh, it's, it doesn't look good. And it's a safety issue because of the sootiness. Uh, but that's, uh, he could probably get most all of it done. It's around $500. If he's one of the states, you have him come through once a month, uh, with, with some laters and they take care of all of the main sites.
Yeah, it's.
So, uh, you guys want to get it done?
I think it should be done, yeah.
From safety.
Yeah, safety issue. Now, when you said they're going to spray the sidewalk?
Yeah, they'll use a power washer.
Oh, you mean power wash?
Yeah.
I thought you were like spraying something on there.
No, they'll use, it's, it's a power washer and, and, uh, you know, just like any other power washing, it's not going to last very long. He's just got small. He's just got a small, you know, uh, power washer, it's pretty powerful, but.
It's gonna do it for five hundred dollars?
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, he said three eighty, but I, it's, might have to call back or work a couple hours over. He's just, he's, uh, an eight hour, he should be able to get most of it.
That's a bar.
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion for that? Do we need a motion for that?
No, no, it's, it's, nobody has a problem with it, we'll go ahead and do it. You've already authorized, uh, you know, them to do maintenance work right here, they'll just try and. Shut that, that up.
Great.
Okay, uh. You can see the pictures, this is one I mentioned on page, uh, twenty-two, how that builder just left crap all over the sidewalk and pedestrians getting to walk on it. And they should never leave a job site at the end of the day with something like that.
It's clean now, I don't know if somebody said something from the one on Sunset, but yeah, it's horrible and the water leakage I spoke about is to the left of this house, the weeds are growing over the sidewalks that being dead by water.
And this one's on Venus Cave, that picture.
Uh, the top of it.
Stone, yeah, with the stone, yeah.
That, the stones are gone then?
Uh.
Oh, no, you mean, yeah, oh, going over the sidewalk, yeah, I got you, yeah, I got you.
Yeah, it's hard, especially if you're walking an animal, you don't want to be in the street.
And Sunset K, they're starting to finish up the landscaping there anyway, they put sod in the other day and this is, they cleaned all this out.
They, they swept, but that's the one with the water leakage, the weeds grow.
One, one seventy-four? Yeah, one seventy-four, yeah. Yeah, I, I'll, after the video, I wanna take another look out there, it looks like they.
What bothers me is the owners, the owners, the contractor.
Yeah. Well, and then page twenty-two right there, they're gonna find those bushes right next to the sidewalk. You, you realize that's gonna block the sidewalk within a year, sure.
It will.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, those are, those are seat brakes.
Well, I'm gonna.
They get huge.
Well, I'm just wondering.
Yes, I do, I live the sidewalk.
It's gonna block the sidewalk. No, I mean, he's got a park.
He's got them right up next to the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're right next to the sidewalk.
That's what I saw this morning that I went back and looked at.
Yeah.
Will you talk to them?
Yes.
Okay, they're gonna have to maintain those, uh, secret.
If they leave them where they're ever gonna have to maintain on a rest.
That's.
It's gonna be.
Well, there is major.
Yeah. I think what he's trying to do is hide the sidewalk.
He's trying to hide the whole house.
Yeah.
He's got them everywhere.
Everywhere, all three sides.
Yeah, the, all three sides have got seat brakes on.
Really?
Yeah.
Grow more.
Yeah, now he's from, he's from the United States.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Chris has identified all the sidewalk, uh, five or six of them, and he'll get those. Uh, there's the grate that needs to be replaced, Sam said just get them contacted and we'll take care of that. Uh, the water control structures are all clear except for the one on Venus Cave and Sunset Cave. And Chris will go in and he'll cut back the, uh, vegetation. You guys will have to do that on a regular basis. It's just, it's just saying it's starting to be filled up and they'll cut that back. That becomes an obstruction for water flow outside of the community. Uh, the gutters, he's gonna take care of that. Uh, the one sixty-seven Sunset Cave, I assume Chris picked up a lot of the stuff that was laid there, but, but, uh, again, they, the, the, these builders need to clean up, probably every day. Uh, if you're, and, and I think it's important, but the culverts that he identifies, he's got, uh, two, four, let's say ten culverts that are at least twenty-five percent filled. And, uh, we thought we'd just get mentioned there to blow those out and guys are okay with that. That's gonna block water flow. Uh, so that's good.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Chris, that other culvert on the, uh, far east end of forty-one, uh, we'll have Chris take care of that. Part of this sequence, yeah. Uh, the drainage soils banks, uh, David's on top of that. Uh, let's see, the, say, uh, one ninety-nine Cave's Drive, the soil's filled with, uh, soap. You'll be able to come on that?
Yes.
Uh, then Newport entrance landscaping, all of that, Soto will send that, so. Uh, Cave's Drive entrance, uh, you know, we identified a few things there. Uh, we do have a proposal for paint, I think that was Cave's Drive that he put together.
Yeah.
So, um, other than that, I, I think mosquito spray. The mosquito spray, he shows all the time what's been sprayed. Uh, a couple things has been done recently. Uh, we switched from the previous chemical to duet. Now, duet's quite a good word, so they're about the same price per barrel, but the other one was fifty-five gallon. And duet is thirty gallons, but they're about, and they go through a barrel about their own, uh, about every three months. Now, the other, I forgot the chemical is, but, but there was a lot of comments that it wasn't as effective as duet. And I think duet is what the county uses too. But, uh, so it, it's costing you more money than what it adds in the past, I promise. Since the mosquitoes are higher or are really bad, but, uh, it's, we just got, uh, ordered another barrel. Uh, like I say, it's like everything, last one was in June, so it's almost every three months and it's, uh, almost seven thousand dollars for a barrel of, of chemical spray. So it's not as much as it's gonna be through the county to file on your tax, through the district, it's, it's, uh, going up a little bit. Unfortunately, you guys put enough money in the budget, I think.
I don't, I don't think there's gonna be enough for next year. If we look anything, what, what we've done this year, we're way over this year.
Yeah, well, this year we've sprayed four months than we typically have. And if this is.
That we started earlier.
Well, I think this, this year too, uh, at the beginning of the year, we paid for some.
Yes.
So it made an extra, uh, batch that we paid for.
The, the chemical, but the spraying, you know, we started earlier than what we have.
Yeah, well, it's mostly the chemicals.
We started in February.
Yeah.
This year, and normally we start in, uh, April or May.
I was gonna say April.
No, it's the chemical, we're very over budget on the chemical.
Yeah, it's, uh, if you spray all four months, you'll get about twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, but we're not budgeting for that. The whole budget is set at five hundred. I think this year it's, we have almost twenty thousand budget, so. Uh, let me ask you this, the, like, with the chemical, when you said the county uses it, do we piggyback on the county's contracts?
We, I don't think, no, well, but the mosquito control district, I don't know if they do our sharing of. Now, Clark says that they give us the same price.
Yeah.
It was the same on Marco as it is in the state, yeah.
Well, you can get a copy of it, but.
Yeah, but I, I have. Places, no degrees, it's, it's all there.
Not talking about buying the chemical.
Yeah. The, what we purchased, the duet.
We can piggyback on the county's counties, you can, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Find out what that pays and we can get their price, yes.
Should be, but they, Clark said, said we do, we get a municipal rate.
Yeah, but we can get, we can get a copy of that contract.
Sure.
These are the dollars, sure. It's just almost anything we do, we could piggyback on the county, that would be good, saves us a lot of running around.
Well, I called Clark, uh, when we couldn't get it.
Yeah.
And I said, is there a shortage? They directed me to another person and I said, is there a shortage? Because we can't seem to get this duet, which works better than the Soto, whatever. I don't know of any shortage, but let me check. They never called me. And they had probably, they wanted to get rid of it, so we ended up, I'll bet you buying stuff. They goes, we'll, we'll double check that. The other thing that, uh, uh, the control from in the camp, uh, where we can turn it off without getting out.
Fix that.
Uh, yes, it, it was down for a little while and now we've got, if it's not here yet, it's not on the way. But a replacement, uh, old extenders, so we're set on that. The, the, but the people that are out there, I mean, I spray once a week for my son. I think his life.
He's tired.
Yeah, and there'll be somebody walking on that, the opposite side of the road, and they pick up their dog and they stand in front of their house and they scare you.
Yeah, yeah.
And so they don't have a house. I mean, I, I can't explain what we did.
That's.
Anyway.
And they know when we're coming.
Oh, yeah, they know when we're coming.
We know when we're, we tell them.
Do they plan?
Um, Chris's maintenance list that you see on, uh, page twenty-nine, uh, those are things, follow-up actions, these are all, he's caught up with everything from last month. So now these are new and they'll get them this month, so these are the things that he's working on.
Was it list last month? It's long, you got a lot, you got a lot done.
Oh, like days work and then she does it.
Exactly. He doesn't wanna, you know, it's, it's a trip charge every time he sends somebody out. You know, he's bossed out, he can get a full day's work for it, that's just one trip charge.
And then, so what are we, what are we gonna do about that maintenance painting proposal?
That's, uh, that's.
Twenty-one hundred.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
Oh, well, we were, that would be, uh, if we look at the follow-up items, uh, Cave's Drive landscape lighting, uh, repair. Uh, so, so the lights have been ordered, the contractors, just waiting for them to come in. Once they come in, then they'll, they'll install. Then you've got the proposal from, uh, Marco Island Painting to do the, you know, the power wash, it painted out, uh, use stucco wherever it's needed, but they'll, they'll care of that the best they can. Twenty-one hundred dollars.
I have a question on that monument, it came up recently. Uh, is that monument on our land?
Uh, yeah. It is, we've always been painted, do you know the one on Cave's Drive?
She know it? Strangely, uh, I did look at that and it doesn't show. So it's that, I'm not, I don't think it's an easement, at least I, I, part of the plan, that's not, I can see.
I mean, it's a typical, you know, municipal identification sign, yeah, you know.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, if it's not our land and that may have recently sold.
Yeah, it doesn't appear from what we've got so far that it's an easement.
Yeah.
We must have found it as easement where that sign is. Uh, not to say there isn't easement, it just didn't show up by the plan, maybe it's not been recorded, whatever.
But if it is in parent land, should we get something in writing that, you know?
Uh, yes, for that, either license agreement or easement, yes.
Yeah, that's what I.
If needed, otherwise I could say.
Anytime, yeah.
Anytime, make a little improvement.
Either take it out or you're appropriated, no one's for taking.
So, I guess, you know, Dave can research that whether or not.
Yeah.
I think the other thing on the home related.
Yeah.
Newport, but this is on Cave's Drive.
Uh, well, let's table this and then, right now, we'll see what needs to be done. And exactly, it's gotta be removed.
Yeah, or just get something in writing, we can keep it there.
Uh, don't need the most, so, plus license.
Oh, like, it's a simple license agreement, grant of easement, grant of easements, professional license can be terminated, so, whatever the words is, or the property. There's not, just, we'll have to get the other party to agree to it. That's always reported?
Yeah. So we'll table that.
Okay.
April.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's everything that we've asked of Chris.
Take this to the board. And any report. Yeah, just, uh, the one issue, the, uh, this is to be brief because the conversation, uh, the chair, Kayla and I met with, uh, the principal, Scott Mack, his attorney, uh, an hour and a half or so, conversation in part for, for the settlement discussions. And those are all confidential, but the upside is that the status quo that's out in litigation will continue, which is, we don't have, the district does not have to respond to the lawsuit until thirty days after the settlement discussions have come to a conclusion. Uh, at some point, I can speak up a little bit, I'm not sure they're picking this up on the report. Yeah, we had a conversation, a meeting with the, the prep Mac Scott, his attorney, uh, Mr. Kish, Cal and myself at our offices for an hour and a half. And it was, uh, part of getting for a settlement discussion, which were confidential. And we could discuss those in a closed-door session, but other than I discussed here. The upshot was that the status quo of the lawsuit, which is the district does not have to file any response until the settlement discussions come to an end, is maintained. Uh, we may have further discussions down the road and at some point in time, we may need another closed-door session, but that's what I think right now. And just, uh, otherwise working with Cal and Chris and Dave on other issues. And going through the bankruptcy filings in the federal court system and also Dan Cox had provided, delivered by way of Cal, a number of large three-word binders with various pleadings from the bankruptcy action. And I have scanned them into our system, it's all electronic. So those have been very helpful because there are some affidavits in there, there's other materials that have helped recreate the history. That was the Montwani. We also, and we have a, in the hotel, we have the. And, uh, again, and there are excerpts of transcripts of deposition and affidavits, so it'd be helpful with Ron Benson of the history. Cause Ron was bespoke, was opposed extensively in the application.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Uh.
Okay. I. Well, we worked with, I, I've gone through, we had some discussions about ERC rules, we have.
Right.
But I've not seen yet the issue with regards to what's gonna be proposed, the workshop, uh, so I'll work with Cal and Chris and Dave, what the presentations will be.
So now we're on, uh, part of the third. So I guess everybody's aware that Jones has withdrawn their proposal, uh, your back to the square one and, uh, how you wanna proceed, uh, I. And Ray had asked this, this be on the agenda also, so I'm sure he's got a lot of comments. I, I just, uh, wonder if you want to consider either just a workshop of the board, uh, with staff and develop a plan, but, but it doesn't seem like anyone really knows what they want to do with that. We sit back and wait for proposals and certainly a viable option, if you wanna sell it, just about any other thought or consideration, let's get, uh, somebody to market it, go out and try and sell it. Uh, yeah, but you might wanna, you know, there, Rock had presented something a few years ago about maybe putting the wells along the river and then you could save almost a million dollars, uh, between the cost of replacing that main distribution line from the wells of the plant and then putting it on parcel thirteen. Now, if you put it on parcel thirteen, you're restricting, uh, a lot of that land. But I think you'd still have a couple nice development plots of, uh, maybe ten to twenty acres that you could do. Wouldn't have to restrict the entire property, but I don't think, I don't know, the board's never really decided if they should or they shouldn't. But I, I don't think the board has really sat down and thought, what do we wanna do with this? Now, we could hire a professional planner, Cole Montez has one, you could talk to some other firms or a ton of them out there and they come up with a nice plan for you, how you, you know, you could give to a developer and, or a, uh, a developer and say, you know, we've got all the sites available, we've got, you know, all fifty acres, whatever, but at least you would have a plan that the community could review and everybody would know where you're, where you wanna go with this. I mean, I, I think it's a integral part of the community and, and, uh, you can certainly see how much interest it's generated from the president. So, uh, that's one I, and like I say, I've done these types of things at the workshop and, you know, usually get a, a whiteboard out and, you know, uh, just get your input, what are the things you'd like to see, not see, and, uh, And, you know, we could put together something, but I'm not a professional planner and I'm not gonna be able to come up with some nice pretty drawings that says you need this or that or whatever, this whatever people like or. But, you know, we could do general ideas to come up with a plan. However, you guys want it. That's a master plan for that area or the entire county or community is gonna be. Uh, I, I, off the top of my head, I'd say maybe twenty-five thousand. You think I'm off on that?
Sounds reasonable. Yeah, and Cal and I briefly talked for a while, school, off the top of my head. Is that one thing the board may want to consider also is doing the master plan exercise was helpful. The board has the ability to apply for the necessary terms, rezonations, items such as that. That, again, that's an expense, it's inexpensive to do that, but that would make it arguably market rate. That's one thing to discuss, I think, at the workshop too.
Don't you need to speak up?
Uh, the board may want to also consider obtaining entitlements for the property so that it's more marketable. Arguably, and you're cutting down on due diligence and those kind of elements. Again, it's not an inexpensive exercise because you have filing fees and engineers and planners and public hearings, but that can be part of the discussion once you figure out what master plan is that you can vision, as you want. Now, you're, now you're more controlling what your destiny is, the utilization of that site.
But I, I have two concerns off the top of my head. Number one is I found this in my papers, December nineteen ninety-nine. And it basically says it's hard to sell that parcel because of the ERCs. So, I mean, this has been going on for like twelve years. We, we can't sell it because of that. And I think part of all this is we have to consider what we're gonna do about those ERCs to make it saleable, no matter what it is. And my other thought is I feel we have a fiduciary responsibility and getting into real estate is taking a risk. And I don't think we wanna put ourselves out there to take a risk and then have two thousand and eight repeat itself. And it just lays dormant, it never happens.
Well, on the seventeenth, that's one of the greatest topics that you're gonna discuss. What you're going to do with your ERCs and how your, if you're going to consider changing the methodology and if you're gonna do that, then that's part of the rulemaking process. And there's other things that you're gonna discuss, but I think that's the focal point. What are you gonna do with vacant property? Uh, the formula's good, but it's just for vacant land, I'm not sure that that's, you know.
That's like the annual assessment too, is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll give you some ideas at that meeting of, you know, if you reduce your total ERCs that you're filling for by, say, thirty, uh, it's going to cost us much and how many could afford it? So that, but that, I'll have that sort of.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, it's just, it's not next door, but I read it, I, I listen to it, I see some neighbors and I think all this evolves around the ERC problem. And until that's resolved, like, uh, one other thing I wanna say, I'm next door. I paid attention to who's writing in. We have twenty-eight people giving their comments, which is fine, but twenty-eight people out of eight hundred is not a consensus of what this neighbor wants. And I just wish they could allow the board to do their due diligence and make the best choices. Because I listen to a lot of neighbors and I, I know from, one is, what's that thing called, like, uh, where the sun generates electricity?
Solar, I think it goes to work.
I looked that up and the most you can get is a thousand dollars an acre. And I don't think people realize, even if it's fifty acres, that is not gonna give us enough money compared to what the annual ERCs were on that property.
I think that that's the decision the board has to make. The ERCs will take care of itself. And, and the next topic is, uh, real estate proposal. You can go ahead and proceed with that. If the board wants to sell that property for the best development they can get, you can proceed with that. And then, you know, if we get questions on how many ERCs are necessary, you know, we're already gonna be deep into that process of changing it, whatever you guys decide.
I think it was, it has been talked about in the past about getting a commercial realtor to sell this parcel. And when I first got involved with the board, we voted to take it back to sell, to recoup our money.
True.
And we're, we're still in that position, we need to recoup that money so we can move forward with capital improvements. And then, then you hear, um, it, it'll cost everybody like a thousand dollars more a year in assessments.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah, for like seven years. Now, that number was put out there. And it's also, let, let me send a letter to the community. No one is researching if this information is right. And even that thousand dollars, if it were true, it still doesn't identify how we recoup the money we're losing every year. I think if we sell that property right now, even for the appraised value, we're just recuperating, recuperating the last five years, not moving forward, you know? And that's what this ERC meeting's about, to see are we willing to lose some of that money to gain the money? I don't know. I'm very frustrated.
Sure. If the board, I mean, the feedback, I don't agree with your next-door neighbor, but the feedback I get is that, some people want an RV park, some don't, some people have talked about business, some people solar panel, I've heard that. I've heard green space.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the board has to decide what you wanna do with it. And right now, if you wanna, if, if the consensus is that you wanna sell it, get a commercial realtor in here, get them, you know, you can start interviewing next, at the next meeting and, you know, select from the, or you can select from the polls. You have now, but, you know, that's the direction that we need to be able to move forward is what, what do you wanna do with it? You know, what we.
Well, I, my feeling is the board in prior years voted to sell it and I've always agreed with that.
Okay.
Now, I know we have new board members and I know they're entitled to their vote, but it's, it's been years.
I like your idea of us feeding and just talking about it, but after the ERC rules are in effect, you know, or, you know, we have, after the seventeenth, we're gonna know more. And I don't think putting it on the market with ERCs, current, in the current thing, that's what's been the holdup, that we're getting ahead of ourselves.
Let me just clarify that a little bit. On the seventeenth, you're going to pass some ideas that we'll put into the rules. Okay, it won't be in effect until you go through a public hearing for rulemaking.
Right, we'll know.
And a public hearing for adoption of these new rules. But we would be able to tell potential developers that the board has, is leaning this way and has directed us to revise the rules to reflect this, but it wouldn't be in effect.
Right.
So we would know what.
Question, I thought we discussed this last meeting about the ERCs on parcel thirteen and that right now there are no ERCs on parcel thirteen until we sell it. And then whoever purchases it, purchase, buys it, will then purchase the ERCs that they would need, whether it be an RV park, condo, homes, whatever. They would then purchase the ERCs from us to be able to go ahead with their project.
Exactly.
That's correct. Well, I can tell you how, as, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think the CID ought to be in the real estate business. I'm in favor of selling it and letting somebody else handle it and get it out of our hands. That's my own personal opinion.
And we have.
Cal?
To say what should go there. And if that zoning is to be changed, that's up to the developer because that can be quite expensive. I did it once myself and it was over a hundred thousand dollars.
Sure.
So, you know, that's the. Go ahead, Ray, you be quiet.
Hey, Cal, um, I, I agree. Uh, listen, the elephant in the room is this, if we don't sell the land, we're gonna go bust, in my opinion. Uh, if you just look at the sheer numbers, there's no way we're gonna keep going like this. We're taking on water. I think that a couple of thoughts. We sell the land, we should have, we never had it commercially marketed by professionals. A, that's the best way to find out what the market really is. Two, the two million dollar number came from, um, us, from Jeannie Congle. That's the number, Cal, that you threw out. So that's kind of been the baseline that everybody's been going after. I know we had it appraised, that's one person's opinion. That doesn't mean that if I wanna sell my house and the market rate right now is a hundred grand and somebody offers me a hundred thirty-five or two thirty-five or three, that's the market. Just 'cause somebody appraises it doesn't mean it's the gospel. So I agree, I think we have no choice but to sell it, whether we want to or not. I don't want to, but I think we have to sell it to survive, number one. Number two, I think we have to have professionals put it out there on the market worldwide. Forget that two million dollar number and let's see what it's worth, you know? Uh, and go from there. That, I think the key is gonna be, we get the best possible broker and, um, you know, we give them a spiff. Everything they get over two point five, we give them an increased commission, something like that. It works, trust me, it works. And we just go for broke and get all the money we can as quick as we can.
Cal, can I ask you, why did this last buyer pull out?
Uh, they said, according to, I haven't talked to them, I talked to the realtor. He said, uh, their age, they didn't wanna get into a long development project and it seemed like that this wasn't gonna go as smoothly as they anticipated.
I get it, maybe it was ERC issue in the assessments.
Yeah.
But they were proposing something that would be less ERC. They, they had actually, I was surprised they pulled out because they actually contacted either Tommy or myself.
Oh, they kind of had a Zoom call, might be able to return.
Yeah.
We talked for a while and that's when they contemplated the concept of possibly using it for hydro potting farming, a portion of it. And so then we were gonna have this call and then in a couple of days, they sent an email saying it's off. That's, that was it, from my perspective, I mean, that's all I heard, yeah.
I know.
And we didn't shut the door on the.
No.
Army, you know, whatever, if you're gonna change your development plans, it's gotta go to the board and they have to make a decision. But, you know, it was, what, some type of agricultural business was identified as potential use by you. Fraser.
Yeah, I guess where I got hung up is the county has zoned it specifically. And when someone comes along and wants to do that, I think all the ripple effect from a small group in this neighbor negates everything. And that shouldn't be, what if we didn't own the land? So.
And I will say that Jeannie Congle, just off the top of her head, Jeannie.
Oh, yeah, she was nothing when she did that.
Very helpful, but.
She wasn't far off, was she?
The two million was being played in what she said. When they came, they said, what do you think the board will accept? And I knew that Jeannie, Jeannie was about one point six, one point seven. And I forgot exactly, but I said, I think the board would seriously consider two million.
And one of the things in the, in the, uh, the appraisal that we got the last time, what could, you know, what possible uses, et cetera, one of them is agriculture. The problem with agriculture is there are no ERCs in agriculture.
Right.
We need, we need immediate money, a sale price, and we get the money. Number two, we need an income stream coming from the land. And the only way we get an income stream is ERCs, putting it into agriculture, not, no ERCs, no income. Putting it into solar farms. To, even if we go with what it said on next door, which was two thousand an acre or fifty acres, that includes the ten acres that are, are conservation that they're not gonna be able to use, that's only eighty thousand dollars a year. That's not enough income stream for what we need. So we need to sell it and we need to be able to have it developed so we can use ERCs to get an income stream coming in so we can afford to take care of everything that needs to be taken care of by this board.
Yeah, and I think we're running out of time. It's been.
I agree.
And we have to start infrastructure and everything, we have to start fixing things.
I think that Terry, I think Terry brought up a really good, a really good point and I think we're missing it. It's gotta be residential, she's right. If we don't do residential, what else could go in there that will optimize the ERCs that will continue paying us a stream? It's gotta be residential of some sort.
The, um, I agree, we gotta sell it. And now that we agree that, that seems like we spent money on appraisal that was a waste because it's only one person's opinion, so. We need to sell, we, we, we have to take the unknown factor out of there, that it's the way the ERCs are set up. No, none of the buyers understand what they're gonna get hit with. So when we clear that up on the seventeenth, like, hopefully we can clear it up on the seventeenth. Uh, then we can proceed if you wanna list it with, once we've got it finalized, the rules in place and developers know exactly what they're getting into. I'd say all these surprises, uh, you know, if B Bay started an RV park any time, I just don't see it. I see too much opposition, all the opposition is RV co-op, it's something like that most. And I, I understand it.
But, or you can put housing, what about the, the government house?
All I'm saying is I understand their opposition to the RV park. So, and I don't wanna get in the land management business either.
No, no.
So, let's.
But if I recall, the first deal, part of what negated that was the county's impact, it was over above our.
It was, it was mentioned, but it's, you know, I mean, these guys come in and lay on, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that, you're gonna have, you can't have anything that moves, you can't have anything that breathes, you can't have anything that, you know, leeches water, what, you know, our, our demands were never ending and unrealistic. So, you know, let's get our shop in order, get the rules in order so they know what they're buying and then we dump it. We, we get what we can for it and, uh, and as far as realtors, what they're getting charged, I don't know how it's commercially, but on Marco, they're taking two percent.
Yeah, they're a lot higher.
Here's the.
All I know, but I'm just telling you, there's such a desperate need for them to sell anything now. They're taking two percent on Marco, granted, see, every sale comes on two million. But, you know, they're, 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 they're negotiating at lower rates, don't have to necessarily go with five percent.
What, what about doing something to start, whoever buys it is going to have to get rid of that conservation area in the back, what is it, ten acres?
What do you mean?
No, I mean, it's gonna have to be changed because you're not gonna be able to, you're not gonna wanna, a conservation in the middle of your development. Most people aren't, they're gonna wanna be able to develop those ten, ten acres. You know, if it's, if it's a, if it's a quarter acre lot, you're talking forty homes. If it's a third of an acre lot, you're talking thirty homes. That's a lot of money for these guys. Is there any way that we can start the process by asking the county to be able to do that for us and change, get that changed? You know, can they, can they help us out, so to speak? You know?
Where's?
It's a county.
It actually says with the acreages.
Well, the appraisal report has approximately nine point nine six.
Yeah. It's located on the. It's shown, I think it's shown on some.
It's shown on one of the, one of the, I thought one of the maps shows where the, but no matter where it is, it's gotta go. It, you know, as I said, so now you've reduced it to. So now you've reduced it to forty acres, you're selling. 'Cause they, unless somebody decides they're gonna spend the money to get the ten acres changed, they're not gonna do it.
You'd have to mitigate the ten acres. You'd have to, you'd have to buy ten acres, uh, up the road and, and put that as, uh.
There's, there's difference between land that's in a conservation easement and there's land that's designated conservation, zoning or rent use perspective. And if I, I'm looking at the aerial photograph and it doesn't look like there's anything environmentally sensitive on it. Maybe it's just the north of the, uh, of the plan.
Yeah.
And so to the extent that, assuming, this is the entire con lot, zone area, but that includes the government.
Gun club, yeah.
So, soon forsaken discussion of nine point nine six or ten ends here. I mean, I, just assuming it goes there. Then you have all this that's open, that's approved, that's actually impacted. And to the extent that, that would not need to be mitigated, per se. We should change the zoning classification of that. Right now, you can, it says here, you can have single family homes on this area as well. This privately owned land is gonna be single family, et cetera. That's what the appraisal reports, I'm not gonna check the land use district, the land development code. Uh, but if, if there's a desire to, this is owned RT. And if there's a desire, which allows multi-family townhouses. If there's a desire to resuminate a single family or to RT, that's something we can discuss with county staff, like a pre-application to make it consistent. But that's, but the county, we have to look at the whole zoning process.
Exactly, but if, and if we ask the county to help, you know, look, here's what we wanna do, we wanna be able to get rid of this. Help a brother out, we need, we need some help.
What happens on zoning matter.
We don't have deep pockets.
Yeah, what happens in a zoning matter, you go in, you have your consultant, engineers, attorneys, surveyors, things. Meet with the county staff and they have a couple people around the table. The transportation, engineering, stormwater management, our environmental folks, everybody kinda hovers around. They already looked at the property in advance and they say, okay, here's, these are concerns we have. Conference of plan issues, ABC, uh, land development code issues, ABC, uh, traffic impacts. I mean, they, they give us an indication of what their initial thoughts would be if the district were to submit a rezoning application for a particular use. So then you go back to that and go, oh, these are big hurdles or, okay, these are doable. But that pre-application, meaning the fee is what, five hundred dollars, I think, is all.
Yeah.
But it's, it's just getting your consultants together, once you all decide what you want to have used on that property. Then the consultants would say, here's a zoning that should be on that property. Uh, and then you have an indication about the staffing.
And what kind of buyer is that there, the fifty acres?
Yeah, exactly.
Housing.
It's a small, it's a small parcel. It's not a big parcel. That, again, what the appraisal report said was. And you've got the disadvantage of what people think it's so far away from goods and services.
And the plan.
That's what we like, that live here, we wanna be away. That's what we love.
You know, you may, you might get a creative developer that make them along, treat the con areas as a buffer. Our corporate space, our preparation buffer between whatever uses are down here and up here, you know, the gun range and ski range.
Hey, Tony.
Creative developers out there, right?
Tony, can I ask you a question? Is it at all possible, um, as haphazardly as this district was plugged together, is it possible at all that that could have been a mistake? Because if you walk out there, I've walked all of that and there's no difference in the topography at all, none. There's no wetland out there, there's no nothing out there. It's desert, just like the rest of it. And I don't see ten acres of conservation land.
Well, I have to go back to the creation, it's zoning land use matter, not the CID, per se, and look at what was originally conceived way back at the concept of developing the whole project. And was that, was this a trade-off for impacting other areas to designate creation, land use, and again, it's, I'm not aware of a conservation easement thing on it. And if there is, that's a different story. But, uh, just zoning categories, we have to go back in time and try to find, you know, planning commission records and the old staff records, which can be done. I mean, there's, the records folks at the county are very helpful on that to see, okay, what's the genesis of that land use designation?
Exactly, because that's not an accurate depiction of the parcel. If you go back there and walk it, I don't mean literally, but I mean, well, maybe I do mean literally. If you go back there and walk it, it's not wet. There's no difference between it and the middle of the lot. So there's something wrong with that.
Oh, again, it may, it may, it may have been part of the give and take during the zoning process many, many, many years ago.
No, there was actually a permit issued in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven and they probably had to keep that as a conservation area where they would dig for a retention.
Okay, Eric, it's not a conservation area. It's designated conservation zoning district.
Right.
Development on it is on.
Retention basis, so.
Well, that's not the only use. If you go through appraisal, in the conservation, you can build single family homes. It's, I mean, I, I didn't check, but that's the appraisal.
And, and they appropriate?
Yeah, it says right here, conservation design. The purpose and intent of the conservation district, conserve, protect, maintain vital natural resource lands. Own private.
Right.
Public, but then it says, all proposals for development in the con district must be subject to rigorous review, et cetera, permitted uses on privately held land only, single family dwelling units. Uh, publicly and privately held lands, only dormitories, duplexes and other types of housing is maybe incidental to and in support of conservation. So that's more narrow than passive parks, equestrian paths, open space, biking, hiking. Uh, family care facilities and group care facilities. Again, that's not a cons. So then, again, it, we need to separate out conservation easements, which are imposed on property to protect their functioning, whether it's wetland recharge species. And this is a zoning designation.
Right.
So, I mean, I didn't go back and check the land development code, but the appraisal has it in there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there, there was, uh, when Hollis Check owned it, they were moving dirt. They had a developer that was gonna put a RV park in and they had accepted plans. And I bet that, that, that's where they said that they were gonna put their stormwater retention base.
Yeah, again, again, I think the key is, the key is, you have, the term conservation is, is different context depending upon, we're talking zoning or whether you're talking permitting or conservation easements, they're completely different contexts. David, anything, just weird.
Just the, typically with development, you do have to set aside certain lands for conservation and so forth. So, yeah, that does.
Our conservation under the conservation easement context, as opposed to a conservation zoning designation.
David, can I ask you a question? There, back there, there are a series of berms. And some of them, I was told by South Florida Water Management years ago, were flood control berms. And then others are in there. There's a retention pond for our waste treatment and a settling pond just beyond where that designated land is and it's bermed in. And then there are berms for the shooting range. So I'm wondering if that might be it, because there's a lot of berms out there and, and some of it was for flood control.
I, I'm not so sure about the flood control, but there is a wastewater pond that's designated back there. It, it does get, I don't think it ever gets used, but, uh, there is a pond back there and there may have been some stormwater ponds back there also at one time or another.
Right, and that's right out beyond it.
South end of the planet, yes.
Yeah, and one other aspect about just quickly on the conservation zoning district, a lot of times they were plopped on property thirty, forty years ago based upon what was perceived from aerial photographs to be the condition of the property. And then you get into real world, you walk the property, you do the ground truthing and you say, ooh, that's impacted wetlands, it's no longer functioning wetlands. I mean, that happens all the time. So then the boundaries of zoning district get adjusted. So I think, getting back to why this was designated zone conservation many years ago, we could go back and look at the historical zoning records, I can, it's relatively easy to do that. Park's website has.
I think we should.
Yeah.
I think we definitely should. Get that cleared up.
I like, play the great mouse detective and go find that stuff.
Yeah, I think we should, 'cause I think that's erroneous.
Do you think you can do that by the seventeenth?
Uh, I lost my chop to try to get as much as I can by that time. And a lot of it will depend upon the responsiveness I get from the records room and book management. You used to be able to go there in person and write through the files. Uh, you can't do that anymore. You have to rely upon them and the email exchanges, but they're really pretty responsive about them.
Is there any reason why we can't do these two conbeds? Can't we go ahead and start the process of getting a commercial realtor to, to do the property?
Yes.
Yeah.
In the middle of, yeah, there's no use in waiting any further. Go ahead, let's get the commercial guy to start, a person to start, um, advertising the property and in the meantime, we're gonna handle looking at the ERCs to, to be able to get that. Let's do them together. Let's don't keep wait, putting them off. The longer we put it off, the longer we own it.
I agree.
You're making the motion, I'll second it.
Yes, I do.
Uh, I'm not sure what the motion is.
To go ahead and hire the.
Sell the land, uh, and to get a.
Go ahead and get a commercial broker. Yeah, or.
The ERC.
Yeah, if we can get him there, the seventeenth.
Let's, okay, so you have a motion to sell the property.
Yes.
And to hire a commercial broker. And that was made by Sam and, uh, I have Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
On paper. Hi.
Right.
What?
How do you vote on that, Ray? You wanna sell? Okay, you.
One, one other thing, we're getting hung up on the ERC thing and I think it was, um, Russ who just said, or one of you said, that there really are no ERCs attached to that property right now. It was you, Sam, and that somebody's buying it, there aren't any ERCs keeping people from buying it.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So we are, there's ERCs they can buy.
They can purchase them. That's correct.
I know a guy that's got some for sale.
I mean, we're talking that there were ERCs attached, no matter what it was used for. And it was two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year that he was gonna be paying as soon as he purchased the property. So there are ERCs attached.
No, no, that was, you talking about.
But Seaman and Jones both, we told them that there are no.
Right, there's none.
They have also those, they think they are attached.
They thought they were attached.
I'm not sure why.
They might have done past research.
Yeah, I think the appraisal records.
Yeah, well, but Seaman asked us how many they would have, they had.
Yes.
We totally.
Like they, we told them they were gonna pay as soon as they bought it. They were right into it. That's how it came across the name.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I think they were under the assumption that, uh, there was no deferral or anything, 'cause we never got that far. But that when they purchased the land, if they were gonna put so many, uh, RVs out there, they were gonna start paying ERCs.
Sure, before they, before.
That's what they done, yeah.
See, by way of example, the appraisal report says, for purposes of evaluations, it is assumed that the development is a TTRV. Our cap will result in the allocation and assessment of two hundred and forty ERCs and that CID annual assessment, the amount of approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand will accrue beginning with the twenty twenty three tax year. Those parts function the valuation, right?
And I think at this ERC meeting we're having, we'll decide if, if that statement is true as if the whole clump goes at once or he's a parent or whatever. But it, it was like he said, when they buy and have their plans, the ERCs kick in, right?
The same thing with.
Win, that's right, that's right.
Development, you can phase in the ERCs as they, as they get to that point.
But the statement is.
I mean, all that's up for negotiation.
When both Seaman and Jones was told that, that they could.
Yeah, they could set it.
Give us a plan and I said, we gotta start paying two hundred and ten thousand a year. I said, no. I said, there are no ERCs. You will, when you, part of the sales agreement would identify what has to be done.
And how many they wanted? How many ERC they wanted?
Yeah, Seaman wanted three hundred, I believe.
Well, that's 'cause they wanted.
And that's what they were gonna be paying.
But if it's a three year.
For an RV though, it's just kinda south.
It's, it's point four, I think, is it?
Yeah, point four.
Yeah. But Terry's right. A big part of the land sale is deferring it. I, I agree with that. I mean, let it, let's let them build the damn thing and, and phase it in. I think she's right about that.
You'll have this resolved before he starts building. But, right, you might not have it resolved. If they, if they have a buyer right away, they might not be resolved by then. But, uh, before they put a shovel down, they close.
Yeah.
You'll have this resolved.
All right. Tell them. We're gonna.
All right.
I know where you're coming from, Royce. If there's ERCs on a property, then it has to be that until you accept some type of alternate plan based upon the methodology of the engineer analyzing that proposed development. Now, what was on that, soon as you guys bought it, the, the COI bought it, they went away. Because you haven't collected any money on it, it's not part of your budget and it's just.
Now, other, other parcels have ERCs, but if they want any change, they have to come forward with what they're building.
Yeah, well, but, but on the other part, sorry, correct me if I'm wrong. If, if you have five, just say five ERCs on a piece of property, but you're only gonna use two and a half of them.
Yeah.
You have to pay annually the assessment for five.
Right.
And you have two and a half that you don't deserve. The, the property.
See, that's what we're gonna discuss on the seventeenth.
Yeah, that's.
Change then.
Yeah.
That's not right.
Well, I think part of it is when they come forward with a plan. Let's say the ERCs are based on one family dwellings and the plans are different. That might change the ERCs too.
Well, and single family, there's, uh, a half a dozen homes that bought the lot next to them just 'cause they didn't want a house for it. And they're paying two ERCs.
Two halves. Okay.
I just remember the trade-off though, is the less ERCs you have, paying the assessments, less money coming in, which if you're gonna balance total, that means everybody else has to pay.
Everybody else.
Yeah, it's seventeen hundred dollars an ERC.
Well, so if you, what do you lose? If you lose ERC, sir, that number's gonna creep up, maybe two thousand, three thousand, whatever happens.
I did a quick research and it, it's gonna be, I was looking at the fifty acres here and it'd be approximately a thousand dollars a year. You know, some will pay more, some will pay less, but a thousand a year plus five hundred to keep performing. So it's fifteen hundred, let's say for five to seven years. But then you're, you're still gonna continue to pay them.
We should sit down, I don't think it's gonna be that much.
Yeah, I did a lot of research, but I was just.
You gotta remember, that fifty acres, you're getting nothing off now. So you're, if, if it stays vacant for the rest of time, you're not losing. You don't have to increase your assessments or anything else. If you reduce on the other lots, say.
Then everybody else picks it up.
But, but if we proven without this money, we can continue to move forward without getting ERC money from that parcel.
You're, I would say you're flush, but you're in pretty good financial position.
You just get, got plenty of priorities as far as like the capital improvements and so forth. You may have to defer them a little bit longer and hope you don't get bit later. Uh, and of course, you can always look at issuing bonds and so forth out there also to help for big major.
Yeah, but when we did that, that's when we got into the lines of raising assessments.
When, when you reduce the ERCs of the utility by three hundred dollars per ERC, you, uh, create, you still have a budget where you'll have about three to four hundred thousand every year for capital. You keep it at that rate. I think with no ERC adjustments, you're not, I mean, I, I. Every time you did a, uh, financial review like ten years ago, say, you guys have no money, you're wrong. You have money now. I mean, you're not flush. But you can certainly, what you're living in now, you can maintain the level of service and address the capital items over a period of time.
Okay, my question would be next. As far as interviewing and hiring discussion on the, we already have a list of, what is it?
Like four, four files.
That, that are interested in, in, in the commercial, uh, proposals. Are we going to, we gonna interview those? How are we gonna do this? We're gonna let, you know?
Well, I think Ray has some ideas. He, I think, that's the agenda.
Thank you.
I think we should just bring him in to the. I think we should just bring him into the next meeting and see how we like to cut of their jib and ask him what they're gonna do for us, because the no two are alike. And see what it's gonna cost us as well. But I think that it's important to get a face-to-face, find out what their ideas are, just like we did when we hired Tony. How could we say no to Tony, you know?
Okay, that's all well and good, you can do that. But I just wanna go back one step, because you, you say we're all flush and we're all well and good. But if you talk into Scott, I got some numbers off the hotel, okay, because he's looking at a purchase over there. And you think we're all flush and, and well, it's good, well, financially, we're all set. But you take that hotel out of the equation, where are we?
Sure, we're screwed. Well, it depends on how many-
How much cities are adjusted? Well, how much does he, how much does the hotel pay right now? 240, yeah, 240,000 a year. Okay, what do you think the restaurant pays? Just the restaurant, not the bar, just the restaurant. What do you think pays the ERCs? Dollar wise?
That's in a restaurant, is it ERCs all under the hotel?
No, it's nine separate units. It's like, very interesting, nine separate units. So what do you think, what do you think the hotel pays? I, I mean, uh-
I think it's 27,000.
27,000.
It's $40,000 for the hotel, for the restaurant, just the restaurant. So you got an overhead there, 3,600 a month, just for that, that comes from rent, that comes from whatever. And the hotel, they've paid money at least in the last five years. I don't know why they haven't just said goodbye. Because they're losing 600,000 a year, $400,000 a year, $200,000 a year. It's mostly because of the ERCs.
I, I, you're talking about adjusting existing, I mean, vacant properties, one thing, but if you start-
I know, that's what I-
Going through, that's an engineering gap.
But that's what I was talking about. You say everything's well and good with everybody paying like, um-
That's a little change.
Right, no changes. No changes, but that's why he's saying to stick on that five acres that was across the street, they had 20 ERCs on it. Right? And they come back and they say, well, we're only gonna need, we're only gonna need five, so you're out 15 ERCs. Well, that's fine, that's gotta be spread out among everybody else. Exactly, keep the same level of income coming in.
And the same thing if the, if the hotel goes under.
Exactly, yeah.
If hotel goes under, then everybody's, non-add ballroom is going from here.
The home.
That's what I'm saying, everything is not, kind of set right now.
You're gonna reduce on existing-
It's a long way from it.
That you're collecting from. Say you, you reduce it by a total of 50, you're looking at a loss of $85,000.
I get it, but I, I just mean, everybody's concerned about collecting what we're collecting. But we can't seem to get any more, because the way this system we have in place is flawed. No responsible businessman's gonna come in, so we changed this. And unfortunately, if we change this, it's gonna affect other properties, I think. And it has to be changed, we're, we're just in an old system that's-
But I, I think you need to look at, if you change vacant properties, one thing, and I agree with that. But now, if you start looking at changing the calculation for ERCs for the restaurant, that's kinda how changing the calculation for ERCs.
Okay, so just on vacant property. Well, vacant property, but how can anybody expand? How can they do anything over it if their ERCs are so expensive? You better check right out the South Hotel parcel. The property owner, or whoever the property owner was at one time, they were buying extra ERCs in order to do a radio's plan also.
Yeah.
And shoot her. Yeah, you know, he, he was purchasing them in advance, he knew what the cost was, then it got sold to other folks, and he got carried on. Yeah. So that's something that's never gonna happen there either. But that's what we found, the whole system is wrong. Maybe, maybe the ERC system is wrong, maybe we go with water usage. Maybe the average homeowner, instead of paying $80 every two months, is now gonna pay $300 a month and not pay the ERC. You go with more traditional kinds of things that's coming up. There, there is a more traditional system that you see other utilities use, where you have a base charge. Right, that's to take care of your depreciation, your government improvements, all, all, all basic costs. And then you got a consumption rate that pays for your, what you're using, what you're sending down the system and so forth. But then, that's why I wanna bring that up now, but that's, that's my point. The, the whole system is wrong. Okay, it's just not, it's not fair to commercial, commercial can't expand, because it's not fair to them, it's just-
Well, it goes back to, if we move forward looking for a commercial Realtor, we are working on the ERCs.
Right, so we'll be doing that. All right, so, all right, I just wanna make sure we're, we're versed with these ERCs and what the commercial people are experiencing.
Russ, there's one thing you gotta remember. The hotel was for sale. Sunstream is doing everything they possibly can not to do business, okay? They're terrible. And McLaren, Scott's partner, was ready to buy the hotel. He was a week away. He was gonna step up and pay millions for the hotel. Had nothing to do with ERCs. And he backed out, because Sunstream, in their infinite wisdom, jerked them over future room sales that they had. How much could that have been? They were stupid. That's all it was. McLaren was ready to buy it, all ready to go, Scott's partner with the ERCs.
And again, and I'd be, on the 17th-
Yes.
We're gonna flounder, and we're just gonna be, you know, sure not making any direction. If, if you've got ideas of what you'd like to see, get it to me, and I'll get with Tony and David, and we'll, we'll put together a plan, and maybe it's two or three plans, but we'll split it into something that's worth it. I, uh, my thoughts was that we were just gonna to address vacant properties. But if you want to address ERC structure, where, how we build for it, the board a long time ago, I, I don't know how long ago, but, but many, many years ago, decided that they wanted to put the cost on, on the tax rolls, because so many people weren't here, and they didn't wanna build it within the rates. But David just suggested, you put that on a side charge, which is gonna be-
Right now, we're gonna pay a charge.
Play it on your taxes. And the board then decided that, or, I'm saying the decision that it was easier to put it on the taxes as opposed to put it on the-
Utility bill.
Utility bill.
Well, that thing. Then you have a deduction on your taxes that actually benefit, now it makes almost no difference. So unless you have huge, huge charges, it doesn't affect you, doesn't affect the taxes.
But we can look at a charge, an overhead cost, that's constant, every billing cycle, will come up with what it is, that's gonna be probably also what Terry's saying.
It's gonna be based, basically, yeah, it's gonna be, the base charge is gonna be based on your ERC, or RV, or size, or whatever, that you actually do have. And then there's consumption part. I, I took a real quick dirty look at it, and if I just took what we're assessing on the utilities this upcoming year and divided that out, we're at the upper end as far as monthly billing on an average residential home. We're up there with Marco Island, so forth. We're not, you know, we're, we're not two times more than a neighborhood utility, but it is a big increase.
I'm doing simple math, let's say round it out, a one-family residence, it's 2,000 a year. We get a utility bill, six times a year, divide six, it's to 2,000.
That's what I did, basically.
Yeah, and that's over $300 a billing cycle.
$150 a month, which isn't all that crazy, if you look at what a bill is on a Marco Island, for a single-family home.
But in the end-
Marco Islands are obscene.
Yeah, they are.
In the end, though, the average homeowner here in the port, if we change the ERCs, whether we change it for everybody or just the vacant land, just because we change the ERCs, don't expect all of a sudden their taxes are going to go down. Because in the same time, we have, we have X number of dollars we have to have every year to pay for everything. So it's, it's either divided among all of us, or a smaller group, or whatever. So what I'm saying is for the people to understand, just because we're gonna discuss this, doesn't mean all of a sudden, oh, if they lower the ERC by 50%, we're gonna pay 50% to Lex Tech. No, you're not.
No.
It'll be the same, because we need the same amount of money.
Folks that are gonna benefit with the vacant lands, those that, that for whatever reason, we do other adjustments.
Yeah.
Well, if you shift that burden, the cost of, of the overhead, your, your fixed cost, that's not based on consumption, it's just to have people there. If you reduce that, whatever that cost is, and say it comes out to $500 a home, you can reduce the taxes by, you just replace it one revenue source with another.
Right, right.
But it's just still averages at the end, you still pay the same amount. That's correct.
The, the only way, I mean, you know, $85, if you cut on vacant land 50 ERC, you're looking at $85.
Okay, but you keep saying we cut on vacant land, but once we cut it, we gotta finish then, but then it's not gonna be vacant anymore. Okay, it's gonna, it's gonna be developed. That's, that's-
Well, like-
Changing it so that it's not vacant. It's not a one reward, it's some proration of-
Of what's there now.
Yeah, what's there now.
Depending on what they're putting-
In the future, you're gonna get development.
Right.
It's reasonable. It's not reasonable.
The, the two don't go together, in other words, just because you reduce it, doesn't mean you're gonna get development. You get development when people are willing to pay the money and buy. That's, that's what happens. So the same thing with what's happened here. I've been here, you know, 12 years. When I first got here, there must have been 40 lots available. Look how many are available today. Why? Because everything's moved this way, this is cheap as compared to Marco. You wanna buy waterfront Marco? Ridiculous. You wanna buy waterfront here?
It's 400,000.
I sold the one, yep, 400. But doesn't mean they're gonna get it, but that's what they want.
But again, that's because, why, why do you think that this property has failed to sell? Because it's not reasonable. There's something in there that's not reasonable, and has to be, or would have sold.
I mean, Jimmy Congo figured it out, correct?
I, I, I met with several developers, foreign and local, but not from POI, Orlando, Ohio, India, and we showed them the property. It wasn't the ERC, it was a gun club, it was a water hotel, and it was the sewer treatment plant.
Exactly. Exactly.
Well, but there's a problem.
That's what's doing it.
Exactly, it's just, again, it, this is why when they did the appraisal, you know, they came out with, you know, agricultural first, something, RV park. Because RV parks more likely to be not worry about things like the gun club and the sewer treatment plant. With, you know, we were teasing the other, the last month about, I said, well, you know, there's always a possibility, section eight housing, because they don't care about the gun club and the sewer-
They cared about the ERCs.
And Ray, what did I, yeah, we could get million-dollar condos. Million-dollar condos are not going in with the gun club and water treatment plant. They're just not. So you, you've already limited what can possibly go in there. You know, the market limits it, you know, people are not, and, and the size limits it. 50 acres is not a tremendous size to, to build, when somebody can buy 100, 200 acres someplace over here, and, and they're selling like hotcakes. Just take a look at Esplanade and all the rest of them. It's like somebody's Johnny Appleseed's going along throwing home seeds, and they're just going up.
Most of my communities in the valley are higher, they're bidding for it.
Yes.
In 2004, yeah, but they're, they don't have a wasteland.
We're a bargain out here, but do you see anybody rushing out here to buy the bargain? No, they're not.
I just have one more thing to say, I'm just breaking off the top of my head. We're saying, Cal is saying, the way we sit right now, we're okay. We're not rich, but we're okay. And that's not collecting on the 50 acres. So if we concentrate on the vacant land, we can still move. But if we concentrate on the whole neighborhood, we're gonna get stuck somewhere. And as far as worrying about the hotel, that's not a problem right now. Yeah.
Louis, though. But like I say, if you cut, if you reduce on, say, 50 ERC, I don't know if that's a high number or a low number. You're looking at about $85,000 in capital plays. Or you just absorb it within your book.
You mean the vacant property that people are paying on the account?
Yes. Right, but you're not collecting anything on the personal 13.
Right.
You know what?
The other vacant.
Yeah, the other vacant, which is-
It's 300,000, we're, change them, change them. Assessments, right? Isn't that what?
No, because we bought it.
I know, but they, but they took that bottom line, it took 300,000 off our bottom line, right?
But you've already absorbed that.
Right. I know what I mean.
But when we sell it, we have an option to get back.
No, no, I'm talking about the reduction that we did with you, the 300, that 300,000.
Oh, that was because of the debt, that was over an additional-
300,000, we already took off our bottom line, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
But we don't want it to be 85,000, I was talking about.
Well, possibly.
Yeah, but remember, that, that money that we're getting back is because we increased that, and we're just giving it back to the people. We're talking about, we didn't increase any money, but yet to give it back.
We also eliminated 500,000 a year in debt, that's why you did it.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just saying, North Gate, I'm just saying that these other people are paying, they made bad decisions, but we wouldn't, then they still, if somebody developed, they wouldn't have these ERCs, they had to purchase it from us. Right? Right, and then we can, and we put what dollar amount, are we limited on what we charge for ERC? It's gotta be fairly reasonable to replace the existing facilities that, or replace the capacity that those units would be taking. And that would include water, wastewater, transmission lines, major, major pieces of the proposal. And we were charging like 4,000 in ERC before. I think if it comes to goods, the cost of everything has gone up two times. I think in the rules, there's like 4,600 number there now. But again, that would need to be re-examined and figured out.
No, that may be the number, that number's already been established. If somebody was to come in today and wanted to call.
Unless, unless we made a change in it.
Yeah, I don't think it was formally changed, there was discussion to basically charge what was lost for ERC. But I don't remember a motion or a vote.
I think that's something we can research.
I think there's something in the rules actually that establishes them out.
Is there?
Did that, clarify that for the people.
But we wanna identify.
Me, if, if, yeah.
Yeah, we got the 7th, we're gonna, you know, I don't wanna get, we can re-
Again, can we move forward with the motion to get the brokers in to interview them and hire one of them?
Well, we already had it, it was a board that approved to sell commercial brokers.
Yeah.
Now we're discussing how, what you wanna do. Do you wanna set up interviews, or you want to evaluate what you have? Do you wanna search for more, right, you know?
I think we should interview the ones we've got, invite them to come in. We take five minutes with them, we make a decision.
I agree.
Five minutes for each Realtor?
Yeah, whatever it takes.
Yeah.
No, I mean, five minutes for each.
Yeah.
Okay, so all of them, uh-
The next meeting.
Is there, Mike Carr, who brought the Jones proposal, asked if he could be considered?
Will it be five?
There's five, sure, of course he can.
Okay.
And, and Cal, can we put it at the head of the meeting? Let's just get them in and out, and let's not make them wait till the end, and let's make a move on it, you know?
Okay.
Need a motion, I think.
Uh, no, I mean, unless somebody wants, doesn't agree with this. Do you think we need a motion, Tony?
I, I think just to have a good record. Okay, I think it's- So.
Second.
It's called austerity.
Sam.
So.
And Michelle.
At the next meeting, five minutes for each.
Five minutes, beginning of next.
Which is the October meeting, correct?
That's.
Yes, because it works, you can't take it out.
And, uh, so all of the subtitles will be invited. I get it, I, somebody said four, I, I'm not sure, four or five. And Mike Carr would be extended an offer if he submits a formal written request.
And if we get another written request from somebody in the meantime, we'll put them in.
Okay. But they're going to have to split a, uh, package in advance so that I can get it to you, okay?
That's correct.
Okay.
Cal, I don't want to see any, I personally don't want to see any offers from Mike Carr. We keep putting the car in front of the horse. No offers. Let's just interview brokers. Bring the offer the next day after we hire.
He's going to be interviewed as a, as a broker.
He's a broker. It's just.
Oh, well, banker.
No. He keeps trying to get ahead of this thing, there's a reason. If nobody wants to buy the land, how come he keeps jumping on it? Let him wait until we hire somebody. He'll still get paid a commission.
He wants to apply to be one of them.
That's okay, that's not an offer.
We got a vote on that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Hi.
Just five plus ten is six. Hi.
Just briefly, before, David, if you could help me on the dispute of zoning. I think Bob, one of your shops did rezoning in two thousand. That changed some zoning from conservation and RT to PUD for where we are now. So again, that just gets back into some of the history. So that, I can give a lot of the first website, you have any files on that?
Yeah, let me take a look too.
Bob Hardy was involved, I can, I've got his name on the.
Oh, yeah, that's nice.
Bob Hardy.
Yeah. I, I think I saw some stuff while going through some of the electronic files.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, rules change discussion and ERC, we.
Probably ERC.
We're beating that to the ground.
But, uh, there will be, you know, public rules that will be discussed, that will go through. Hopefully we'll put together, uh, it won't be today, it'll be, we, we, we got an agenda that we'll, we'll publish and we'll send it to everybody. Uh, that'll go out today, because it's got to be seven days before the meeting.
Yeah.
And then, uh, what we'll do is put together a submittment in advance that will identify those rules that we need to have changed and, uh, might be, if there's some ideas.
Does our new board members have a copy of the rules as they sit right now?
Uh, they're on the website.
They're on the website?
As I said, they're only.
It's some, some of the rules that we might be looking at are pretty mundane, they're just bringing up the date and language. Yeah.
Tony, did you have anything you want to add to that? No, hopefully, yeah, again, it's going to be a pretty government discussion, a lot of yours. A lot of it will be, I call it practical procedural, some of the mentioned before, take the rates out of the rule.
Yeah.
So to the extent that we have to amend the rule to amend the rates. It's easier process, not give the council, just link on that, we'll have that. Where if you want to change the rates, it's just attending, it's not just new development and adoption. And just some of the cleanups that Jennifer has on the billing systems. We talked about that already.
Now, this is a workshop to put things together for the public hearing.
Yes.
So the public hearing still has to occur, but it will be after the workshop.
While act, except what we do, draft, propose documents. It's going to be a while, because then we draft and propose, rule amendment, run by the board, and then have a public hearing on the rule amendment.
You have an extra week.
An extra.
We hit, we meet the third week and start next month.
That's correct.
You have an extra week.
That's correct.
That?
No problem.
No.
It's a good plan.
You're in the money.
It's only a thirty-year set of rules. Right?
We can get that done in fifteen, twenty minutes, top.
The mosquito control, uh, updates, I think I've given those. Is there any other discussion on mosquito control?
Oh, somebody asked me, does that go on the, uh, the vote before the higher county comes in?
So.
That's done.
As it be twenty twenty-two.
Yes, but I haven't heard about what the legislation.
The legislature has to vote on it first.
Right, okay.
But they were looking at starting October twenty twenty-two.
So they have a twenty-five thousand dollars, a thirty thousand dollars that comes off our bottom line.
Sure.
Yeah.
And everyone, you know, everybody that owns a single family home will pay four cents, which will be.
No, 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 I did the research, no.
I'm telling you.
No.
It's one point, it's point one six.
I did the re, I did the values and I did the multiplication and they will be paying the same or less.
I said the single family home.
I'm the single family.
You're going to pay.
You don't think I did, Michael?
Yep. I forget it almost three times. But so.
Okay, um, the security dormitory update, uh, you have, we did file in a, uh, phone enforcement complaint. You just got your fact that the, their response and, uh, the fault APO, who is the, uh, realtor, the contact that was the owner, and basically said they're going to take care of it. And we've asked if they could put up some signs too.
Is there no, no close sale on that place or anything?
I, the people that bought it have thought about turning it into, uh, like a hotel or, or long-term stays for workers.
Yeah, somebody, for Sam now, nobody else is now.
I think Seaman was, uh, had in their mind, they.
They want to get both of them.
And thought of the county, but, you know, once they pulled out, they pulled out everything. And in our hotel, the continent. Yeah. The commissioner did say that, um, we'd have first option.
But let a first refusal lie.
What we're making here, right, you said we have a first option, but it mustn't surprise me. I guess that's one of the questions is, how important do you want to do that or make that? Is that something that makes it appropriate for the chair of our letter to Mr. Castro, thank you for our presentation and say, hey, you all decide to ourselves, please back our goal first. Just a thought, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's just his, that's just him. That doesn't mean that the rest of the, the rest of the group is going to say, write a first refusal to Port of the Islands CID.
No, that's correct, that's right, I think. Nothing else, maybe a placeholder, yeah, so when that does come up. Uh, because I, I know I had some clients lately, a while back, years ago, the association wanted to make sure that the association had the right, took a corner lot because the county utilities wanted to acquire a master pump station. The residents were too wild about a master pump station, uh, they were right next to single family homes. The county was pretty reasonable with them because the local commissioner, uh, kept a step on the toes. I said, well, work, well, so, so Cal, if you want to write that kind of letter to the chair, it's a thank you to you, Mr. Castro.
Oh, uh.
They get an email that's a thing. We're going to try to, just kind of think about, hey, can you keep us in mind?
Uh, okay, some, some suggestions.
Well, she did some of the audio snippet we made, just his piece.
Okay.
It's forty-five minutes.
So, uh. Correct, so you two are listening to this. If you did, uh, look at, uh, putting together a letter that we would send to County Fisher Castro, from what Tony just said.
Yeah, just send me the, send me the audio portion.
I can't hear everything you're saying.
I, maybe you're behind that unit, that's probably why. My wife says I talk too loud. No, and it did, just the audio clip of Mr. Castro.
The only time I hear you talk loud is when you're talking about your seminars.
Only this year, only this year, not last year.
Okay. You're ready to move on to supervisors, select, Mr. Chairman, supervisor requests, comments?
One comment I had was, um, I know Terry was phoned in last month, raised this month.
I am next month.
Next one. Well, the point I'm trying to make is, um, again, it's on the audio and visual thing. Uh, I've read a few things on Nextdoor where they talked about that some people can't hear what's going on, et cetera, et cetera. I just wanted to make sure that we have a setup that was conducive for everybody to hear what we say up here and that when questions come from the audience, that if they get a chance, so whatever it takes to make it.
Easier.
Easier for everybody and, and so people can understand what we're talking about and, you know, you know, even if we had a, you know, two, two microphones out there and you walk up to the microphone, you give your name and where you are and that way we have it in the record and.
Second, no, Ray mentioned, he asked me, Ray asked me, he said, how did you call in? Because she was so clear. So there is a difference in equipment.
Well, we just bought, uh, we being premier, we just bought, uh, uh, the two speakers that, uh, were able to link and, uh, Bluetooth and so we've got a little broader exposure.
Well, I was, I was okay hearing. The only recommendation I have is that if someone from the audience says something, they can identify themselves.
Yes.
Because you don't see them, so a name will help.
Right, and that's why at the beginning of the meeting, I, I said, let's identify ourselves and, and, uh, we do have, uh, two residents on the mall right now.
But now we ought to, we ought to ask Ray how he felt about listening in.
Yeah.
Right?
It, um, it was pretty good. I, I'm going to just tell you, I used to do some of this stuff. I really think we're getting into a place where there seems to be a lot of legal stuff. I think each one of us at the day should have a microphone, the attorney, Cal, we should all have a microphone. It's not a big deal. And I think we should hire someone to videotape the meetings. It's not expensive. We could go to the colleges, they have programs, they could do it with a GoPro, but then it's going to be professional. Um, I really think that's what we should do. The way we're doing it, I heard you guys, you heard me, but it's, it is kind of Mickey Mouse. Um, if you look at any town or city or a commission, they all have a microphone, they all have somebody videoing it. And at some point, it could get legal. And if we have it done correctly, no problem. I, that's my feeling. It's not expensive to do.
Uh, what do you consider expensive?
Um, well, five or six microphones aren't expensive. A mixer really isn't expensive, solid state. And in a lot of cases, there are people that do video, like for weddings and stuff, and they're not busy during the week. They could come in and set it up and we just pay them per job rather than own the stuff. But it's done professionally. When one of us is talking, they can zoom in on it. If someone in the audience is talking, they can zoom in on it. Uh, you know, it's just, I'll look into it if you want, but I, I don't, I really don't think it's that big a deal. And they can record it.
Ten years ago, one of my communities in Charlotte County put in, you know, they, everybody had the speakers. Now, they didn't have cameras, but the sound system, et cetera, that was thirty thousand.
Yeah, but I was going to say that is ten years ago. Couple more Bluetooth and.
Well.
Yeah.
Two more, uh, right now we can only link two. The technology's not there to link more than two. I've got three speakers, but, uh, you know, the old one, which won't link with anything, and then these two. But, uh, Chris looked at a sound system, and I think it was five thousand, where there'd be a microphone in front of everyone. Uh, Chris, could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, the, um, the speakers that you see right now, they make one that's a central unit that can daisy chain. I think it's up to five or six additional microphones. And that was designed for large conference rooms, and that's about five to ten thousand dollars, depending upon how many extra microphones you get. If you're talking about hiring somebody to come in and do live sound mixing and run a camera, um, just from my personal experience, I was a, uh, an independent filmmaker in my previous life up in Seattle. To get somebody to come in and do that, you're going to pay fifty to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, depending upon who they are for the labor. And at three, four hours a meeting, you're going to pay that every month. So that's another cost if you're just going to hire somebody to do this and not buy the equipment.
I don't think the video is as important as the audio.
Well, you've got video right now.
Right.
How many requests do you get a month, Chris, for a copy of this video?
Um, I, I would say probably averages less than once.
And the video is not important.
Usually, we probably had four or five, uh, the average is not.
But, but I do want to say, if you're also talking about a sound mixer, you, that's not something that you pick up and, 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 you know, Cal just is going to drop off in the meeting and then take home with him. You would, you would want it set up for that room, you would want it to stay there permanently. Otherwise, you're talking about having somebody with experience to come in and set the levels and, you know, bump up this person's channel and bump down that person's channel based on the qualities of the sound that day.
Let me do a little research. I'll get back to you next month.
Okay, good, Ray.
Never, never turn down a volunteer.
Yeah. Do a good job at it, too.
Don't worry, where's my percentage?
Okay.
Anybody else supervisor wise?
Okay, and it's, uh, audience. And if you could just come up here, state your name and, uh, so we can pick it up there. Uh, by the speaker, I don't think, did, did you get that going, Randy? Yeah, my apologies, battery. Testing one, two.
He doesn't need a mic. He can speak.
Steve McNamee, I had a couple of things. I was thinking about your, the, the parcel thirteen out here and selling it. Um, I know as soon as people find out that, you know, they're not going to have input on selling it, they're going to be a little upset, but what I'm wondering is, you know, most property, when you're going to go and sell it, you try and do whatever little improvements you can to make it worth more money. I'm wondering if you could, um, start a, a row of trees or something in front of the gun club? May, maybe also in front of the water treatment plant as well, this in front of Orchid Cove there. Um, I know stuff grow really fast here. Maybe that's something we can look at doing. You know, be proactive. Uh, I think if you could screen some of that stuff in, maybe it might look better to buyers or at least try to knock the sound down from some of the stuff. My other thing is, as, as you know, I'm built, uh, working on that five acre parcel over there and I've been touched with the zoning people and they're telling me that I don't have, um, fire hydrants uh, supplied on my property there. And I've, uh, looked at your maps and so forth and basically that property is the only one in the port here that doesn't have, uh, fire hydrants close to it.
How far away is a fire hydrant?
Uh, you know, I, I don't know, but they need to be like every three hundred feet or so.
And that's the town I'm saying.
Well, and that's what you've got in.
Pretty land development, though.
Okay, so, um, even out here in thirteen, there's fire hydrants, uh, at the, at the gun club. And then there's two more in the middle of those parcels. And I'm wondering is, how do I address this? How do I go about getting fire hydrants to service my property?
I think we own fire hydrants, though.
We, we own this fire hydrant, uh, and typically those fire hydrants are placed, uh, by the developer of property as they develop, because we don't know really what the plan is for some of the properties. We'll give the initial fire hydrants put in with irrigation, fire resistance. Uh, the, 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 there is a main there right on case drive that could be used to extend water services. In fact, there's stub outs part of the two parcels that, that are in question, both for water, sewer, and prior irrigation. So they're there, it's just a matter of the developer being responsible for extending those, making it fit their land plan.
Sounds like a sewer, though.
Yeah, you gotta, yeah, we take it so far and then that is up to the developer to take the rest. Yeah, you gotta, yeah, we take it so far and then after that, it's up to the developer to take the rest of it. So does that mean that you wouldn't put a fire hydrant on your easement along that property line there? Like it is everywhere else? I, I would have to look when, when it was originally developed, where the spaces of those fire hydrants were along K's, K's drive. Uh, where, where residential units have been developed at the time of whatever the requirement was for the development of those residential properties a little bit further down that, that, that they have a land development though. Okay, so where do I go from here? Uh, I, I think as part of your, part of your land planning and so forth, you need to take a look at what fire protection you do need and make appropriate. Well, I can't build anything there until, unless there's a fire hydrant with, you know, within so many feet of it. So, um, like on East property there where I wanted to build a, a, a fifty by hundred building, um, they're telling me within three hundred feet of that. If there was one hydrant on the west side of the property, right above where your water line is going, if there was a plug right there and they were able to cross the road, just like they're doing the rest of K's drive, I could move my building closer to that and be within that three hundred feet and probably not have any issue. Um, so, a- and I'm looking at how i- i- if we go ahead and, and cross that road, we're gonna have to more than likely do boring. I mean, and we're starting to talk about some serious money there. And so what I'm trying to figure out is, well, and on the, the west property, there is actually a fire hydrant by, uh, the last set of buildings on Stella Maris North there. Uh, that is within reach of that end of the property. If there was one fire plug put in in the center of that on K's drive, they're right above your main trunk, more than likely, we could satisfy the fire protection for both lots.
I think, but what I'm hearing isn't it, you have to have your plans first to say what you need, so if you count what three hundred feet is.
Well, if you're looking to do some, if there's looking to be some development done at the far end of those parcels, there may need to be supplementary fire hydrants added, and that would be, be, need to be added by the developers themselves. Now, the question is, should, should those two parcels have a fire hydrant within three hundred feet of the edge of their property? That, that may be somewhat of a more decision, that perhaps we could add one in that area to serve both properties in a basic fire supply, but if there's other additional requirements.
Stella Maris North, so there is one there.
I don't know if they would approve you going through somebody else's property through, through a detention area and so forth, the buffers to get to the property to serve, because the, either the fire department, there's a fire, they're gonna bring the truck up, they're gonna drop the hose and keep going into the property.
How about if, uh, David and Mitch get together and see what it would cost and then bring a, uh, report back to you for the next meeting for consideration?
And meet with Steve to what he needs.
Right. I did give, uh, Russ a handout of supplementary ideas that I've got for these properties. And these are, right now, I haven't made my decisions on exactly what's gonna go in there. And, and it's really depending on how this ERC thing plans out. Um, my goal is to put in the least amount of stuff on these properties that I can so as not to change the, the entrance here, you know? But, you know, if I'm, I'm forced to end up with a, uh, you know, this forty thousand dollar bill a year, I'm gonna have to put something in there that I can actually generate that kind of money on. Uh, that was one other thing I wanted to find out is that I just thought of. On the west side of the canal there, they've, they've got five boats anchored along that, that.
Seawall.
Seawall there. And I'm wondering is, is there a reason that I couldn't put five of them along my seawall on my side? Because I was looking at, uh, what they're charging over there, and he says he's full. Um, I possibly could rent out five slips there and, uh, get ultimately close to paying assessments as well as my cost of my money on that property, which again, it would maybe to not have to put a whole heck of a lot of stuff on that property.
Does it permitting for waterway in quite a while?
Well, first off, it's not a C, CID issue. That would be more zoning and permitting.
Yeah, I believe your company does that, correct?
The, some aspects of that.
Yes.
But smart source probability, that's not my expertise.
Okay.
Waterfront. So is there somebody in your office I should get a hold of or?
Both of us.
Would probably start with Bob.
Okay. Okay. I think I told you this once before. Make sure when, if you consider doing that, I doubt if that old boat is still there after Irma. Because it, because it, there was an old boat that sank right in front of that.
Yeah.
So I, I, I don't know if it was cleaned out, but you might wanna check that because.
So we could bring in like stupid diapers and they could have little tours down there or so.
You could, you could. That's all I had.
Well, the other thing, I think, in working with Steve, um, the signs are, you know, not being there on his properties. You know, hopefully we can work together and get the.
But, yeah, we discussed that earlier.
Okay, this is mine, too. I mean, you know.
Yeah, the fire hydrant would be currently easy to straightforward to work with the monument signs. Uh, again, we, we may need to look and see if there is any kind of underlying easements that may exist that did show on the plans, plans. Yeah, and I'm willing to work a deal.
Ready for the next one?
Yes.
Are you ready for the next one?
Oh, wait a minute, here.
Oh, I didn't hear.
Uh, Gemma Janson, two zero five, Sunrise K. A couple questions. First of all, just to clarify, the workshop next week, uh, is open to residents?
Sure, it's a public meeting.
Okay. And I was going to suggest, when you discussed Mr. Ron Benson, he has a lot of knowledge about ERCs. If you are planning on inviting him to attend or who will be coming to the workshop, who has expertise on the ERCs?
Well, I'll be here.
Same firm.
You know, if you, if you want to have Ron Benson, um, that's another resource that can be arranged. I, I think, I don't know what his scale is from being in and out of town.
I think, I think he's still up in Virginia.
Is he still in Virginia?
Most of his work on the historical study would be done from the mouth.
But I'll, I'll be here, I hope. I bet I started reading this week, actually.
Well, no offense, but I've been to a couple of these meetings, and in every one of them, the whole topic of ERCs is very confusing, I think, to all of you. So it just seems to me that there should be someone here who has a background that knows how maybe you can do some rule changes with ERCs so that it does get resolved.
Well, he has experience. He has the records. Um, okay. I've been on it for four years.
I, I don't think there's any confusion on how it's done.
No, I think a lot of the neighborhood is confused. And, uh, that's part of the workshop will probably open up a lot of the doors for.
See, because it feels like there's two sets of rules, one for vacant property, one for property that we own, one for property owned by somebody else.
And it seems, it seems that the potential for ERCs, which is your money generating aspect, can depend on what the developer's gonna do. If the developer wants to put up one house on parcel thirteen versus three hundred units, the number of ERCs, which is essentially your money coming in, are, are different. So it seems that there needs to be some stipulations that whoever is going to buy that is gonna be responsible for a certain number of ERCs.
Yeah, but right now there are no ERCs on that parcel because we own.
But how many you would require the developer?
Well, that would be in the negotiation stage with the, with the developer, whoever it was. They may come in and say, I wanna, I only want to put one every, uh, I'll put half acre lots rather than a third or quarter acre. We have to make that decision whether, you know, well, okay, well, can we live with X number of ERCs here or not? That's, that's in the negotiation stage with whomever decides to buy.
Keep in mind that the Apollo checks still own parcel thirteen. There would still be two hundred and, or a hundred and eighty, I think it was, ERCs on it.
Yeah, right.
The North Hotel, if Monawati still owned it.
It'd be ERCs.
There, there would be a hundred and whatever ERCs on it.
Yeah, it's only because.
Even if you knocked it down, the letterwork was there. That was what was assigned to it based on the plans that was being proposed.
So, so if one guy came in, bought it and put one house on there, you bet you're asking how many ERCs would be responsible?
One.
Right.
Well, that would be our, it's decision to, the decision to sell it, dude.
But the methodology that you're gonna adopt would not allow that. There's no way I'm gonna invent something like that. You might go with one ERC per acre of a developed plan, which, you know, I've said is typical. And, uh, then any subdivision of that acre planted would be ERC assigned to it. So with that in mind, somebody, even if it's a single family house, I'm off fifty acres, they would have to pay fifty ERC.
Right. Like the gentleman that was just speaking, I believe he, he has five acres and twenty ERCs?
Ten on each.
Yeah, ten on each. So, and until we hear what he's putting there, but like he says, if it's only gonna be one, you know, fifty by a hundred, are we willing to give up the rest of the ERCs? We don't know. That's what the workshop's about.
See, but the thing is, he bought private land.
Right.
Right.
That's right, CID, so CID, we, we make our own rules.
Okay. But don't, don't you want to have the.
That's a national, that's, no, no, that's a national report. That public property, I think, how he bought, he took over the parcel. They don't pay any ERCs now.
Yes, they're got.
Right, right. But it's not anything P O I did or P O I, because it's P O I. That's, that's everywhere in the country, in the United States, has to be, uh, public property does not pay taxes or ERCs or.
Generally, there are.
Opportunities to pay, to pay. Yeah, that's not exclusive, both this and or that and that stuff. But I think that's best left for discussion at the workshop, but now we're getting into workshop.
Yeah, have you read the ERCs on our website?
Uh, not in the detail.
It's, it's the rules and policies as far as how they exist.
I think it would be helpful to read the rules.
Yeah.
Because rules and procedures have all procedural rules, all the meetings, and the rules involving ERCs.
Yeah, because that explains a lot of it.
But, and so you're gonna have the ERC decision in place before you have realtors trying to get clients to who are interested, because that, that's the first thing they're gonna ask, well, how, how many ERCs do I have to purchase? Aren't they?
They're gonna, they're gonna tell us what they wanna put there first, and then we can tell them how many ERCs they will need. Like with the RV park, they wanted to put three hundred RVs in there. Three hundred RVs at point four is a hundred and twenty ERCs.
Yeah.
The question is, and what we've been discussing is, when do we require them to pay for those hundred and twenty ERCs? Do we require them to pay upfront? Can we put it off and say, oh, you put forty and then forty and forty? You know, and, you know, how, how, that's, that's the discussion, not so much about how we assign them. It's, but what do they wanna put there?
Okay. Um, and, um, also, if I heard correctly, there's also, you're planning a workshop for, first of all, board, staff to be speaking about a master plan for parcel thirteen, and then you're gonna open it to.
No, no, we did not.
You decided not to do it, you decided to sell it. Okay. How, uh, what's the mechanism besides someone like me sitting here today at the end of this meeting? What's the mechanism for the residents here to be asking questions that they have? And Kale indicated that he doesn't look at next door, so that's obviously not a good mechanism. So what's the, is it your website that every individual needs to be sending a question and get an individual response? Or is there an opportunity for the residents here who could, who would like to get together and ask you a number of questions about, about this parcel? What's the mechanism?
You're doing it right now.
So this is the only option?
Yeah, you can still contact our management company. I believe all of our email addresses are on the website. And I see people on the street.
Every email that comes through the website is forwarded to the board.
We see all of them.
But we're not, but we're not, I, we're not going to individually respond to someone not in a, this setting, where it's, where we're here as officials and everything we say is recorded and, and transcribed and everything else. This is where we discuss what we want to, or can do. We can't discuss it with you individually, because that's just my opinion. That doesn't, the other three before had their own opinion.
Makes us aware that it might be an issue or something that needs to be clarified, and we'll bring it up here at the board, so that we all participate in.
But this is the place.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to talk to, I have no problem talking to anybody one on one, but I can't tell you what boards.
That's right.
I, I, but I can take your opinion, give you my opinion, or just like I gave you my opinion last week when I prepared it last time. After the board was open, I told you that RV park was never gonna be gone, didn't.
And I think that, that you can hear from all of us here, we may not answer on Nextdoor, but we monitor Nextdoor to see what people are saying. I mean, some of the things that.
Some of it's them.
Yes, yeah. I look at it.
But there is the sunshine hall, where we cannot discuss business between us. If I were to respond on Nextdoor, am I not discussing this with Ray also?
Obviously, yes.
Yeah, social media.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I can't do that. Yeah.
This is the place, this is the place you discuss it, not social media.
Right, Ray, anytime I don't have to talk to you, I don't talk to you, right?
That's right. But you're not discussing it with me, there's a difference.
I know.
That's, that's not accurate.
Well, on Nextdoor I am, because you read it and you can respond.
You'd have to be discussing it directly with me, because you're entitled to your opinion. We just can't discuss it collectively.
No, I mean, if, if they cannot, using social media, one board member cannot respond to another board member's comments. And the comment, same topic is, you can choose the sunshine hall by election. So.
Right. The point is, some of us monitor and we just do what's, what, what's being talked about on Nextdoor. We're just not going to respond on Nextdoor, because it's not in this environment here where, you know, we're under, you know, all the other laws that we have to be under.
Yeah. Okay. So the, the option is to either attend these or to put the comments on the website, and those will be responded to if people have a question.
Send it to the manager.
Send it to him, then he sends it back to us.
And he shares it with all of us.
Okay, okay. Um, one other question, I've been doing a lot of work at home, as everyone asks, because of COVID. And I'm not a technology person at all, but could this be set up as a Zoom meeting? Because I, I, I attend Zoom meetings where there's things, so people can go to their computer and participate.
Yeah, go to the website.
They say go to meeting, yes.
Go to meeting.
It's called go to meeting. When you go to the website, there's a link.
Just click on it.
It'll take you to that meeting, but it's gotta be during the time. And if anyone wants a. And if anyone wants a copy of it, then we've sent out, uh, quite a few for POI that's asked for, you know, copies of the meeting, the recording, which adds the video to the meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sherry Fowl, out of the two forty-two, Port Drive, number five ten.
Face to the day.
I used to meet you all. I actually just have a thought more than a comment that might help you. When I own my real estate company on the east side, um, I had training videos, client parties, um, anything that I need video for, I use interns. College interns need to do this to get their college credits. So I never paid for any videos, any mics, anything, was all done for free of charge for the interns. So that's something that I thought about, just thought of that.
And there you have it. I agree.
Okay. I have one, uh, I don't know, comment question or whatever. Reading Nextdoor, I write where you're willing to put the neighbor's comments all together in one and let the community know. I would just recommend that what you hear needs to be proven fact.
I'm putting my knee to it.
Yeah.
I would just be happy to be the facilitator, if everybody wanted to put it together.
I would be hesitant.
You want to, you want to censor?
No, but, all right, the example was that a thousand dollar number was not an accurate number. So some things.
I can't prove everybody's comment.
I know you can't, but I, I'm just saying, before I did that, whether your name's on it or not, doesn't matter, you're gonna communicate something to all the owners. And I, I'd be a little clear if it were me, without doing this.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Never given a jury a pardon.
We, we've learned that.
Anyone else?
Don't you wanna say something?
Then I guess we're adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Ray, you in there?
Aye.